Hi Jennifer. Hi Jennifer, I can see you online. Can you hear us from in the room?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
I can hear you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. I want to call to. All right, I'm gonna keep talking and we'll figure it out. Sorry, we have an echo in here. I want to call to order the September 16th, 2025 open meeting. It is seven o'clock PM. Macy will take roll call.
Mayor Protem Sterling. Are you guys hearing an echo online?
I'm not actually hearing anything.
Okay, we will figure out our audio. I'm just gonna take a roll really quickly. Mayor Protem Sterling.
Echo, echo, echo. Uh, yes, I'm here.
Trustee Larson.
Here.
Trustee Maris. Here. Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Ty.
Here.
Thank you. Is trustee Corvallon online? Thank you, Tanya.
Hi.
Thank you so much. And is Mayor Billy online?
Speak again, Tanya, see if it's.
Are you guys hearing me okay?
We can. We're having a bit of an echo. I marked you here and I'm marking Mayor Billy absent for now this evening. Maybe joining us later.
Test, test.
Hello.
Echo, echo.
All right, everyone, just hold tight.
A town manager, John Kane, is going to leave the meeting very quickly and restart, see if we can fix these audio issues. Sounds like we may have fixed the echo.
Testing.
Hi, guys. Can you hear us? We're just checking on the echo again. Sounds like it's better.
Okay, let's.
Spoke a little too soon last time, but it does sound a lot better. Okay. Yeah, can you all hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do think we fixed it for now. Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Let's just make sure everyone can hear me. Yep. All right. Get back to the agenda here. We have the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All right, there we go. Macy?
Mayor Protem Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Ty, are you online? You can hear us?
Yes. Sorry, I don't know why it muted, but it did.
No worries, thank you. Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Yes.
And trustee Miller.
It's Ty. Ty, mute yourself. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. Just put me in charge of the echo sniffer. That's me. That's my new nickname, I guess. Anyway, all right, let's go on to staff reports. Are there any questions for the staff after having read their staff reports?
I just want to highlight for you, Rita and Macy did some work on STRs, looking at the revenues after our last meeting, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, John. Were there any questions?
Hey, are you still getting an echo from me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mute yourself. Okay, any questions for staff regarding their reports? Okay. Moving along then, let's go on to trustee reports. Mayor Billy is not here. My main report is, we haven't, we have Dr. Cog next, this Wednesday. So hopefully I'll have more report for you. Other than that, nothing else to report at this time. Trustee Corvallon, your verbal report?
Yeah, no, there was no meetings. So, nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Trustee Larson?
The DDA meeting last week was postponed to next week, so I'll have more then, and hopefully then we'll also have CC4CA by then.
Cool. Trustee Maris?
We had our NEPA DAC meeting last week, and one of the things we did was talk about a street name to make it easier that people actually know what we do. So we updated our name to the Netherlands Transit Advisory Committee, so that'll be a more colloquial name. Easier to understand, hopefully. Went through the budget, proposed budget. We sent that to the Boulder County Commissioners for approval. And then our next step is to kind of work together to identify some projects from the multimodal plan to hopefully start implementing probably next year. So that's, that's our next meeting.
All right, trustee Miller?
We formalized our new president, vice president for ProSab. Sam Ovett is president and Casey Cuneo, who was secretary, will also, will be vice chair and, I guess it's not president, it's chair. She will, Casey will continue as secretary and vice chair. And then we are, we have two applications for, to fill a vacancy in ProSab, so we will be voting on those next week, I think. And then other than that, those are the main things. We are still working to finalize the, not finalize, but get the post to a point where we can bring it to the board. Been talking to John, so we should have that. John, you were saying next in October, we should be able to have room for that?
We'll see. We need to, we have a budget, or not budget, I'm sorry, a agenda setting meeting this week, and so we'll flush that out, but that's the plan, is to get down there as soon as we can.
Yep. So hopefully have that for all of us to look at soon. That's it.
All right, and trustee Ty?
Sorry about the echo, I can't figure it out. We voted in Jack and Cass to do the Partners in Energy, Melody Rich to be stand-ins. We discussed Cass doing the CU Capstone Program and Circular Economy. That's, well, the Capstone Program that she will be presenting tonight. And that's about it.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. And just to clear, just because you were pointing it out for a reason, and I should have re-sort of directed all of our attention, John, Town Manager Kane, is that the reason why the STR data was pulled was because Tom Mohald had given that presentation at one of, at the last board meeting stating that they hadn't received the same amount of allocation that they had the year before. But just to make sure that we all like clued into why he called that out, the reason why they probably aren't at the same is because they've only received one allocation. Is this correct?
Two reasons. It used to be 99% to one.
Yeah.
And then we switched that to 5149. Huge difference, right?
Yeah.
And we are, I think I'd have to look, but we are at 12,000 so far this year. So far, at the end of August, we've only collected 22,000 in lodging occupation tax revenue. So half of that has gone to the HHS fund so far.
Okay.
Right now, so Macy will, Macy is primarily responsible for this program, so she'll be collecting revenue from that as we go through this quarter end. And there'll be one more quarter that is yet to occur, so that'll be the last.
But it's, it's definitely, it's half.
Okay, and I am seeing just one distribution so far, Q1 of 2025, that's been given.
There was, no, there was one, I believe there's been two. Where are you seeing that?
Page 25 of the packet. Yeah, that's why I want somebody just to correct me if whether or not this is, I'm reading this, interpreting this correctly, or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. So what I transferred at, on April 30th, 2025, of course, you're correct, was for Q4 of 2024. Yes, you are correct. For, so in, for Q1 of 2025, that was not due till the end of June, correct? And I transferred it at the end of July. You're right.
Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. However, okay.
So it's always gonna be, you know, the last quarter of every year doesn't get collected. They have until the following quarter end, March of the following year. So you'll have to look at this, obviously, you know, these quarters go from one year into the other. But it really, as long as it's fifth, as long as we're staying at the 5149%, it really doesn't matter, right? They're gonna get their money maybe one month later than anticipated, but yes.
Okay.
And so far, excuse me, Q1 2025, the amount collected is almost the same as Q1 2024.
Right, and that's where I'm trying to get that analysis, is that even though it's half, like, trying to understand where the discrepancy is, and so.
Yes, because I agree that when you look at Q1 23, it's a lot higher. It's much more in 23 than it was in 24, 25, for that particular quarter.
Yeah, okay.
Just an example.
Right, thank you.
We might have had more rentals then, too.
There was a brief period with the moratorium and that that was a part of the data, too, from when we had that in place, so.
And the, yeah, because the moratorium was in 2024? Yes? Majority of it. All right, and also thank you for outlining that there are 57 active SCR licenses. We have a cap of 70. Okay. All right, going back up, thank you, everyone, for staff reports, trustee reports, informational item, budget presentation. Rita, is this you? All right, John, you're gonna start us off.
Yeah. That might be better.
All right, well, we're here again. It seems like we just were doing this. I just want to say it's kind of exciting to be in my second budget. The first one happened right after I was hired, and it was like, like a mountain of things to learn all at the same time, and now I feel like that slowed down a little bit, and I think we've got a pretty good presentation for you. I want to kind of like set the stage of what we're doing here today. And basically, what we wanted to do was kind of give you a very high level view of where we're at in the 2026 budget. Just so you have an idea of our process, it really starts for us in January. In January, Rita's working on our budget book that is due to the state, and it's kind of like a document that you'll find on our website that details all the funds and kind of all the things that we do and plans and all that kind of good stuff. And after that, she starts working on the audit, and typically the audit is due at the end of July in Colorado by statute. Rita was able to get that done before June this year, which is very, very uncommon in what we do essentially, but that gave us an opportunity to really be spending the summer working with the department heads to dial things in. So that's kind of what you're gonna see tonight. We've got like a really high level of the 2026 budget. It includes the revenues and expenses for general fund, community center, sewer, water streets, parks, CTF, health and human service, and the sheriff's contract. DDA is not in here. They, they're gonna be meeting this month to talk about it. They were gonna start their conversation last month, but there was not a quorum, so they will have that and we'll have that updated for you as we kind of move forward in this process. The other thing that you don't see in this fund, we didn't really talk about the co-responder program, and that's something we do need to discuss. We didn't talk about ARPA funding, and we also haven't tightly aligned this to strategic priorities like we did last year and in previous years, just because that's coming later in this agenda. So this is just kind of step one, looking at the budget very high level and where we're at today. I'm gonna let Rita take it from here. In pro, it kind of just says what you can expect. It goes through just like we have. It talks about sales tax, property tax, and then goes through those funds.
Correct. As John mentioned, my name is Rita Stix. I'm the town treasurer, and I'll be presenting the first draft of the 2026 budget this evening. The first two slides will be talking about the main revenues sources for the general fund. Next, oh, you're already there. Never mind, sales tax. That's okay. So sales tax revenues receive two months in arrears, so therefore the 242,685 listed under July of 2025 was received in September. We are trending slightly lower this year when comparing actuals received through July of last year. Next slide, please. There you are. So we received 1,270,000 through July of this year so far versus 1,277 the previous year, so that's a difference of $7,100. Staff therefore recommends budgeting, budgeting at the same level as we did in 2025 unless, you know, there's a huge increase here in the next few months. But that's what we're recommending for 2025, and that's what you'll see, excuse me, for 2026, and that's what you'll see in the general fund budget once we get to that slide. Next slide, please. We did receive the preliminary tax assessment, and the estimated revenue for 2026 is at 798,000, which is an increase of 8.9% or 65,000. We will, we will receive the final property tax assessment at the end of November. Any questions so far? Before we get to the ugly part? Great. So throughout this presentation, highlighted in green is the change in net assets for the 2024 year that compares budgeted versus actual figures. This might be helpful information when we're looking at the 2026 budgeted numbers. Highlighted in yellow, you'll see the 2026 budgeted change in net assets. There are separate slides that explain in detail what makes up the capital expenditures. Those will be highlighted in red throughout this presentation. So starting with the general fund, in 2024, the town budgeted a decrease in the fund balance in the amount of 190,460. The actual change in net assets ended up with a decrease of 301,743, which is 111,000 less than, or more, excuse me, than was projected. Yeah, wish, I wish. I did touch base on this briefly, briefly during the mid-year financial update presented at the August 19th board meeting. Law enforcement revenue received in 2024 was 173,500 less than budgeted, and we had projected 57,500 for paid parking and planning and zoning, and no revenue was collected. Those are some of the bigger reasons for the increased loss. Looking at the 2026 budget, we are projecting that the general fund will be operating in the red with an operating difference of 258,175. Once we add the capital expenditures in the amount of 187,402 and the transfers, we end up with an overall decrease or change in net assets in the amount of 411,326. This budget is assuming that we keep coverage with Boulder County Sheriff's Office the same as we did in 2025. We'll be discussing that in more detail, more detail on a separate slide. This is a very preliminary draft that John has mentioned and is still being worked on. Any questions on that fund?
Do we have any indication of how we're trending on the 2025? Because we, we'd expected a $260,000 deficit this year.
So, in the August financials that I sent, we're definitely trending within that.
Within that, okay, we're not seeing that double.
We've got, right, we've got savings so far in all the funds as far as expenses go, and revenue was slightly lower in sales tax and I think it was like some thousand off. So we're trending currently as we should, especially in the general fund.
Also, one thing to note, too, on sales tax, it, and this is anecdotal, but a lot of communities are reporting much more significant drops in sales tax, and we are, we're actually showing, you know, right on target, and that's good budgeting on the part of the board and Rita and everyone. But at the same time, I do think that that is something that's a positive for our community. We've also had a couple other really good things happening in Netherlands this year. So I think that ultimately, we haven't, we're not in a worse position. The other thing I'd like to mention about this general fund is that we, what we did is we worked with the departments just on kind of a needs basis. This is what we need to operate next year. We haven't really cut this yet. So there are some efficiencies here that we can gain. And I think that as we work through this process with the board, what our goal would be is to keep that, that deficit as low as we possibly can, anticipating that next year we should see probably improvement in that fund.
So just quickly, looking at.
I had one quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
So for Boulder County Sheriff's, like, you know, we had, at least at one point, we're expecting fairly large increases every year. And we, you know, when we got to talking about the, you know, unsustainability of that contract, but I see that this, that we're basically budgeting the same amount into.
$46,000 more, but we have a slide about.
We have a separate slide. We'll be talking about that. So I did want to just quickly touch base on what trustee Larson talked about. So looking at your August financials, we are at $161,000 loss as of August. So, and I budgeted $171,000 loss as of August, so we're well within that currently.
And Rita, can you just touch base on kind of for the revenue side? There's a few key areas where you're budgeting a lot less next year than for this year. So it looks like, am I reading planning and zoning correctly, is down 100,000. So, can you just?
So, obviously property tax is the one that's up, the 79,500. So currently permits and licensing, what you're seeing there, the difference is the 50-plus thousand that was taken off for paid parking. That revenue's gone. We no longer are budgeting for that in 2026. And currently also, but that might change, we did decrease sustainability permit fee from also 50-plus thousand to 5,000 due to, we're only at a couple thousand this year. However, we are looking into that, and that may come back up, but that's your 100,000 right there. The visitor center, obviously, you know, if, looking at your financials, that revenue just isn't happening. So it was best to just decrease it for now to what is probably more actual. However, you know, that is a discussion later.
We had kind of thought we'd show you this budget and then come back and show you efficiencies that we could save, and that's one of the conversations we want to talk about is the visitor center and a plan to get it to be what it needs to be, but I think what we're thinking is show you the budget tonight, like how we've kind of like, you know, this is kind of what we're thinking from operational, and we start working on that process, following your direction, and then we can come back on the work session and talk about. Yeah.
Of course, absolutely. Yeah, and, and just so you know, too, and again, we'll talk about this more later, but in the work session or maybe the next regular meeting, you will be provided the detail, of course, that makes this, you know, up, so. Yes, but I knew the answers to those two questions, so you're welcome. So you're welcome. Any other questions in the general fund?
Yeah, I have a couple. This is Tanya. So visitor center, we're going to touch on that later is what, that's what I'm hearing, right? That was one of my questions. Okay. And then I just curious, like, what happens when we run out of the available funds? That, you know, we started like three years ago with 1.4 million and now we're down to 411,000, which we could easily in two years, we will be at zero unless things change. What what's the, I mean, that's, how do we prepare for the inevitable? Does that mean? What do we do?
When that happens, we got to start looking at service levels that are provided to the community and reducing them. But I think that where we're at right now in this general fund is you're looking at revenues that are not keeping up with expenditures by 12 to 13%. Just on average is kind of where the problem is. We've cut quite a bit on the expenditure side where we can, but that would be the next step. But I think what we can do, and I think what's reasonable to anticipate is that 2026, we should see, based on some of the things that we know that are happening around the town, we should see an improvement in the net asset position for the town. So I think what we want to do is budget as carefully as we can right now and really think about the service levels we're providing to the community through these, these funds. And I would like, you know, my goal would be like, if we have to have a structural deficit, it's as close to 5% as humanly possible. That's probably not what we're going to be able to do, but I think we can cut a good amount off of that and keep it to where the available fund balance, you know, if we had that, if it was up a little bit, we'd be probably looking better for 2026 and 2027. But we need to be very careful about managing that situation you just mentioned.
Shouldn't we be talking about cuts like now, like, because that's a lot of money?
Yeah, we will definitely be having that conversation. That's kind of what we had anticipated for meeting.
Gotcha. All right, all sit tight.
And just another one, obviously, looking at, if you look at the expenditures, what stands out is law enforcement, right? So
Yeah, yeah, but even if we set up our own department, we would initially be spending at least that, if not more, for the first couple of years.
Right. And we had some other ideas there, but again, I'll let John speak to that later.
Is that next meeting?
No, we have a separate slide, trustee to talk about the PD. And again, once we get to that where we need to make
Before we go into the funds, would you mind just briefly talking to them like about our fund position and the other funds? An overall, overall financial picture?
So maybe that, maybe that's helpful too. So during my mid-year financial update, I had talked about how, you know, we were $300,000 deficit in the general fund. However, how all the other funds came, they, they brought in or the bottom line was higher than anticipated and how they really, as far as the town's reserves, we didn't suffer that much of a loss in 2024, right? Because of that. If you look at the 2026 budget and the water and sewer fund, they're amazing, right? They're bringing in a lot more bottom line than the general fund. And what I'm getting at is really even with, if we were to stay the same as we look at right now, we're not going to, it's going to be maybe 100,000, let's just say the deficit. I'd have to do the math again. But it's obviously the general fund is our big fund, has the most staff, right? Wages is a big one, let's just be honest. And most of the, you know, staff is within the general fund. So that might be another way of looking at this, that, okay, the general fund looks terrible, right? However, the other funds, their change in net assets is actually an increase. And therefore, what we could also think about is maybe we'll have to do a transfer from one of the utility funds into the general fund if we cannot come to a better place where we're at right now in the general fund. That might be an idea to consider. Okay, well, that's good news. Oh, good.
Going through the other funds too? Okay.
Yes. So the community center fund is in a great financial position. Looking at 2024, we had budgeted an increase of 96,368. And that's a big one. The actual change in net assets ended up being an increase of 174,000. Looking at the 2026 budget year, the community center is once again operating in the black, and we're projecting an increase to the fund balance in the amount of 68,816. Any questions on the community center? Uh, next slide.
Sewer.
Sewer.
I'm sorry, could we go back to community center? Who's, who, so I assume salaries are the personnel line? Am I assuming correctly?
Yes.
Who is the personnel that I guess different people are housed in different?
It's this staff here. So it's Don, Kurt, Chrissy, Byrne, and Eman are the staff for the community center.
Great. So just each kind of each fund has their own kind of personnel. And then the general fund is kind of everybody else.
There's a little complexity in the general fund because Rita's salary, Christie's salary, and Janet's salary all are partially paid out of the other funds because they do work for the other funds.
Right.
So that's, there's like an allocation to the general fund for their time.
Okay, got it. But generally, they are actually like pretty siloed.
Yes.
That's correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is that the sewer fund?
Yes, sewer fund.
So the sewer fund has a very healthy fund balance. In 2024, we had projected a loss of 76,451. And the actual change in net assets was a loss of 44,160, which is 32,000 better than projected. Looking at the 2026 operating budget, the sewer fund is operating in the black. Revenue minus expenditures equal the 97,368. When adding the other sources of cash in the amount of 424, 235 and other expenditures, which includes debt services and capital improvements, we are projecting an increase to the fund balance in the amount of 203,844. However, I did want to point out that the capital improvements line item in the amount of 32,500 is a lot lower than in previous years. And if Andrew is on, I will let him speak to that once we get to the CIP slides. Otherwise, John will let you know what that's about. But that's the reason, obviously, that that is such a big increase. But again, back to the, the deficit in the, in the general fund, this kind of stuff helps, right? Any questions on the sewer fund? Next slide, water fund.
Okay.
Is that what's up?
Yes.
Okay. Well, can we get a little bit insight on that 32,000?
Sure. This, we talk about in the capital expenditure slides here too. But basically where we're at is we have done the water wastewater rate study. We're still waiting on the final draft of the report. But essentially what it is, is that we have a number of capital projects in our plan that need to be saved for over the next several years. And there's two ways that we could do that. We could start that process now, which would involve a significant rate increase on both water and wastewater this year. Or we could do some incremental improvements that we need to do and be thinking about kind of our situation, which would allow us to continue to build a fund balance for those bigger projects down the road and then find an implementation plan that might fit with our other strategic priorities that are happening in town that could start in 2027. And so what we've done is really pared this down to the projects that really need to happen this year. And you'll see this on the slide. There's some incremental water improvements we're working on based on that water model that you saw earlier this summer. The, like, there were things like the hydrant at the community center and some smaller projects like that. And then also updating our SCADA system, we need to start working on that. So in both the water fund and the sewer fund, there's a $15,000 allocation to get that work going because SCADA is just a very expensive process. So that's what we've done here. We have, in the calendar, you'll see, we have planned for a bigger conversation about water wastewater rates. We'd also like to consider going to monthly billing to make billing more predictable and manageable for folks. Because our current schedule, we get a lot of comments that it's a little, it's odd how it comes, I guess. And so I think that what we're really trying to do is, is think about when we start saving for that capital improvement plan is essentially why you see that lower number. So this is essential projects. And then we would, under this model, essentially what we'd do is we'd start saving in 2027 for the bigger projects. Or we could start that process right now. There's, there's multiple options there.
Thank you. Because when I initially saw those numbers on that capital improvement slide, I was, I was like, is that really?
I know, so low.
Is that it? Is that it? Like, I thought, and but then when you see the number at 32, it's like, okay, is, that must be all that you really want. Like, it's the bare bones, by understanding.
About $20 million in our capital improvement plan right now, maybe more potentially, just depending on what all is included in that in the 10-year horizon. And so really, the question is, is there's a lot of strategy to this. It's grant funding in the current federal situation for grant funding and the state situation, because the state's in a constrained position too. So we want to be able to fund these through grants and forgivable loans to the maximum extent possible, especially the bigger projects that could potentially happen. But when we identify them on our plan, what the strategy is, is like when, when they hit our plan and what we need to save on our part to do that. So our bigger plan starts in 2026 with a 12% increase in water and wastewater. But given other things that are happening in town, it's possible that, that rate structure doesn't necessarily need to happen exactly like that. So what we have kind of recommended in this presentation that we'll talk about in the water wastewater bit is maybe we do an incremental increase of like 5% on the funds, which is what was planned for in our past plan, and then spend a little bit more time next year developing the capital improvement plan so that we can start saving for that in a way that's community, just driven, community driven, I'll say. But we could still change that. We could start that process now too.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So the water fund slide, the water fund slide, the water fund also has a very healthy fund balance. Looking at the 2024 year first, we budgeted a loss of 60,087. And the actual change in net assets was a loss or decrease of 138,102. The main reason for the loss being is that we projected PIF fees to be 132,000 and all we received was 36,000. That is really the reason that the, the deficit is higher than we had projected. We are projecting that the water fund will be operating in the red with a negative balance of 91,534. And when adding other sources of cash and other expenditures, which includes 87,500 for capital improvements, the change in that sets equals an increase in the amount of 289,850. Again, the same as in, in the sewer fund. Obviously, that is a lot lower budgeted, the capital improvements than in years before, actually, ever since I've worked here. And so again, that will be, we can go into more detail once we look at the CIP slides. Unless you all have questions now.
Nope. Now that number makes sense in light of the previous conversation.
Right. All right. One more. Great. The streets fund was created to maintain and improve Netherlands' street infrastructure. Point 25% of the 4.25% of sales tax is allocated to the street fund. In 2024, we had budgeted a decrease in fund balance in the amount of 108,823. And the actual change in fund balance was a decrease in the amount of 40,914, resulting in an overall increase of 67,900 when compared to what was budgeted. For 2026, we are currently budgeting to spend 217,201, which will decrease the fund balance by 75,201, leaving a fund ending balance of 3,173. Please note that we are again budgeting a transfer to the general fund of 57,201 to offset half of the loan for equipment purchases that were made back in 2023. So that's been consistent. Any questions?
How many more payments are left on that?
So we go through 2028. Yep. Any questions on the streets fund?
Out of curiosity, I know that we are limited in terms of how we transfer funds in and out. We can transfer to the general fund, but general fund cannot transfer into these funds.
Correct.
What about from a, a fund that's healthy, like sewer fund over to street fund? Does that have the same constraints?
There's, you have to do it the right way, but there is ways to do it. And I think that would be a board cover policy conversation about how sometimes it's done through a loan. Sometimes it's just a transfer. And I think we'd want to work with Jennifer on the right structure for that, if we decided to do that.
Yep, just curious at this point.
We, one of the things I was going to ask, we're having a department head meeting tomorrow. And one thing I would do want to talk to staff about is the allocation from the funds that we're currently taking for the admin support. And I'd like us to do a little bit of an audit of like our time that we're spending and resources we're using for those funds to make sure that we're kind of in line with what you might expect in terms of time. So that's something we'll do before the next version of this comes to you.
Thank you. I also did want to mention, I, I did, you know, we met with Josh and obviously it's not sustainable. Let's just say, sales tax revenue is around 140,000, right? Every year, we cannot keep going the way it is. But I think this fund was created, obviously, to be spent on streets maintenance. So right now, the way it's budgeted, if 2025 were to happen as we see it, and now, you know, my 2026 numbers, it would be left with 3,100, right? If the board feels that that needs to change, that's up for discussion. But at the same time, I did mention to Josh, we cannot keep doing that. I'm allowing that or obviously I decreased it, I think by 30, 30,000, 40,000, because I had to, right? Otherwise, we were going to be in a negative fund balance. And we did discuss with him that, you know, moving forward, most likely he would have to budget within his sales tax revenue piece. So because we cannot go into a negative fund balance.
It could be this fund builds up for projects over time.
Yeah, we could do that too.
And how come the, the personnel expenditures are like different than the other funds?
So, so the streets fund also is part in, in the general fund, the streets department. That's where your personnel, the wages are. That's where they're captured in the general fund.
This fund is purely tax supported. That's what this does is it creates that kind of extra revenue for streets. So there's no personal cost, a personal cost that come out of here. It's just the professional services, the only one for, and that's like if they need an engineering project, which is very, it's not super frequent for streets, but we want to have a budget there just in case something comes up.
And just to be clear, it's a percentage of our sales tax that goes to fund balance. It's not an additional tax.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is this
Ready?
Is this parks? Yep.
All right, there you go. Behind me.
Okay.
There it goes.
So the parks fund was established back in 2024. We are estimating that the 5% marijuana retail sales will earn about $60,000 of revenue in 2026. The projected increase of 10,000 is based on actual amounts collected in 2024, which was 61,945. And we have collected 50,250 already as of August, which is more than the year-to-date projected revenue in 2025. We are budgeting the same amount in expenditures currently for the 2026 budget year as we did in 2025. Any questions on the parks fund?
Well, just to clarify this, like being parks being like streets, the, the personnel.
That is correct. Also in the general fund and the parks.
And so this is just the expenditures from the marijuana tax that is supposed to go to parks. Right.
Correct. Next slide.
There you go.
All right. So the conservation trust fund is very regulated on how we spend the funds. These funds must be used for park and trails improvements and maintenance. We are proposing that the 2026 revenue and expenditures to be the same as in 2025. Any questions on that? And we could, and we'll talk about this actually separately also on a CIP slide. We could potentially increase the expenditure line item to allow the parks fund to spend more money because there is a fund balance there. But we want to talk about that separately as well under the CIP slides.
So, I mean, that's basically a parks budget item, right? Like that parks and trails improvements. Do we not reflect that in the parks budget? Or like, how does that, because that's, isn't that essentially what that means? That we have $16,000 for
So that can also be used.
Yeah.
That is correct.
This money comes from lottery funds from the state, and there are very limited things you can do with it. So it isn't, it wouldn't, we can't combine it in just in general with We can't combine it in just in general with our general, like, we can't put it in a pot for all projects. It needs to be, because this is gonna, they're gonna like have documentation about this. So for instance, like, there's some weird things, like you can't pay for a stage in a park, like, or a band shell, but you could pay for a pavilion. And so there's just a lot of state rules that you have to like navigate for that. So typically, what happens in CTF funds is they build up in communities and then you use them for something like maybe you do a playground, or maybe you get equipment that you need or something like that. And that's typically how they're used because in, there are, I mean, there's other things besides lottery proceeds in there, but for a community that isn't directly impacted by gaming, the money amount is just not as significant. And we actually get a little bit more because we do have proximity, so. But that's typically what they would do with, what you would do with it is kind of use it for a project or, or something specific.
Like, that's something we could use for the rink or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Parts of, well, I'm gonna actually change. I'm not sure if we could use it for the rink, but we might be.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, next slide. Alright. I'll wait. There it is. So the health and human services fund is funded through the lodging occupation tax revenue, which is collected in the general fund. The board approves appropriations yearly, and those funds get transferred from the general fund to the health and human services fund. Currently, that split is at fifty, forty nine fifty one, whereby fifty one percent is allocated to the health and human services fund. We are projecting revenue and expenditures to be twenty two thousand nine hundred and fifty in two thousand and twenty six, which is the same as it was in two thousand and twenty five. The twenty two thousand nine hundred and fifty estimate is based on collecting forty five thousand of lodging occupation tax revenue. As I had mentioned earlier, as of August, we have collected twenty one thousand four hundred. We may need to be adjusting this, these dollar amounts for two thousand and twenty six as we move along in the budgeting process. Any questions?
I have one here. I mean, this is basically, we collect money, we just give it to them.
Yep.
I mean.
That's it.
So why do we maintain a fund balance with that nineteen hundred? Can we just give them an extra nineteen hundred and make sure it zeros out? Because they might be able to do something with that two thousand dollars rather than let it ride in the bank.
We can certainly do that. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I can increase that for sure.
Unless, is there any taper reason why we need to have some then held back?
Nope. And I think that's it for my.
Alright, well, I'll take over from here. First thing we got here is the BCSO contract, and I've got this slide that's very similar to the one we looked at last year. You can see here, there is a percentage increase of five point one percent. I've been told by the sheriff's office, this is what we should anticipate moving forward, is this kind of increase. There could be other that could change over time, just depending on their situation, but this is kind of, it sounds like that's a number we could potentially use as a, as a baseline. So here you see, there's almost a forty six thousand dollar increase on our two thousand and twenty five contract. It's basically the same level of service that we have right now. And this is what, this is what it would cover is the deputies, the sergeants, the animal control, and then kind of the other costs associated. One other thing to note on the BCSO contract is remember we do extra duty shifts, and we budgeted that at two something?
So we kept that the same for extra duty expenses was at hundred and twenty four thousand and extra duty. Excuse me, for expenses, we budgeted a hundred and twenty four thousand and for revenue, two hundred and thirty thousand. So we kept, I kept that the same for two thousand and twenty six.
We've been doing relatively well with that. We had to take a break on extra duty for a little bit when our court administrator left because the ticket volume was too high for us to handle in the interim. But that's largely returned back to its pre to the condition it was before that happened. So I think ultimately this number is what it is. I think there's some opportunities to talk about this, and it's one of the things that we talk about in our strategic plan. It's like how we want to handle this moving forward. I think that's probably the conversation we want to have.
In the budget, it, we budgeted for next year, I think, one point two four, if I'm looking at it correctly. This is nine hundred and thirty one. So is it adding in the extra duty?
So it'll be nine thirty one plus the hundred, uh, hundred and twenty four thousand that we budgeted for.
Dispatch.
And dispatch, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is actually the contract total.
This is the contract total. We have to say dispatch no matter what, and the extra duties handled separately. But in the, in the first slide that we showed, it gets rolled into that law enforcement line.
Yes, the one point two million.
Those three things combined.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
But they like to separate out dispatch, even though, but we're paying them for dispatch too. Yes?
We are.
Okay, but they just want to have it on a separate slide.
But the con, the contract is not.
The contract for dispatch is, we have to have a dispatch contract no matter what.
Question.
We either have to like have our own dispatch or go to another dispatch or be on BCSO, and it's the easiest. Being on BCSO for where we are is the right choice. The one thing to note about dispatch, there is, they basically do a similar allocation for all the communities that happen. There has been some talking about Longmont going on to their, on to the dispatch than the other county that they're a part of. If that happened, they would, they would probably take the dispatch that, the contribution that Longmont has and, and put it across us. So there is a potential that we could see an increase in dispatch at some point in the next few years, but right now I think we're at a pretty stable level. And I want to say, I, I should have had that number in here, but I don't. I want to say it's like around fifty thousand.
So it's basically three, we have three contracts with them. So there's three contract totals.
Yeah, and the, but the extra duty is not really a contract. It's just, it's more of an arrangement based on this contract, but but it's, it's a variable cost because it depends on what happens in, in reality, as Rita says, we need dispatch on the, or we need extra duty on these days based on what the, the budget the board has budgeted. So there's no uh, there's no like financial obligation other than what we're wanting to spend to cover that.
Okay.
And so just so I'm clear, dispatch, we'd have to pay whether we had our own depart, police department or not, like that's dispatch we have to pay regardless.
It's a non-negotiable.
Right. And then the extra duty. So we, we're, we're, the expenditure for the extra duty goes into law enforcement budget, but the, the revenue from that is the two seventy nine, seventy eight. And so we have basically like a net hundred thousand dollar gain from the extra duty.
In theory, but it really depends on what they're doing. We've used extra duty for, we use extra duty for things that we need sheriff support on.
Yeah.
That are not like a P one or P two call being like a, a violent or unsafe situation kind of thing. So it could be something like, we need somebody for a marathon in town to run traffic control, and that could be an extra duty shift. It could also be like traffic enforcement on the canyon at a time when we know it's getting bad, or if there's somewhere in town, we need to do that, or, or support for code enforcement or something like that. And that's typically how we would do that, is just have that other person support in that role.
And just to clarify, the dispatch was how much again?
So I looked that up. So the dispatch is fifty four thousand five hundred.
Okay.
And, and you know, we need to, obviously, that's the same amount as in two thousand and twenty six. That's something we still need to talk to them about. And then, like I said, the, the contract is nine hundred and thirty one thousand, and then I added sixty two hundred and twenty four thousand on top of that.
For extra duty.
And, and when you guys get the detail, okay, the Boulder County Communications, in other words, the the dispatch is a separate line item that you guys will see once you get the detail.
And Rita, that was a hundred and twenty four thousand for extra duty?
For expenditures, that's correct.
For expenditures. Okay, got it.
We've done pretty good with the extra duty shifts with the revenue produced this year. Like, it's been better than it was in the previous year for sure, so.
And obviously, in that one million two hundred and forty is the wages, is everything is, is obviously included in that total.
Okay.
Alright, so these last slides are the capital improvement priorities. There's a couple of distinctions here I'll make, just so you kind of see the, the picture here of where we're at. The streets fund, what we really got is this loan payment, the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That's for the water truck, the grader, the ram truck that we purchased. And again, that ends in two thousand and twenty eight. That's really all we've got in the general fund for streets. We do have Big Springs Egress Grant Match. We did get that grant extended for a year, and so there will be grant match. We budgeted seventy three thousand. That's similar to what we budgeted this year. That grant was probably oversized for the project we're doing, and so it's possible our grant match will not actually be at seventy three thousand. I think that's probably the maximum based on the work we have left, but we should probably, that's about we should budget for it.
Can I just say something on that really quick? So that's something to look forward to, right? In two thousand and twenty seven, seventy three thousand dollars less in the general fund, unless we come up with a different grant with a match, but. Sorry.
The other big capital improvement project in the general fund is parks. Now, I want to note, we haven't budgeted any of this because of the state of the parks fund, but these are needs that they have. There's also probably ways we get around doing some of this stuff in the parks fund or in the general fund. We can be creative, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. One thing they really do need, the skidster need is strong. We have a skidster for water wastewater, and they have to borrow it, and they're working in smaller spaces a lot for parks. It would help them to have a new one, and that's something that I think is one of their priorities. New bathroom doors at the visitor center. This is something that needs to get done sometime in the future. There, we had a very fancy system in place that was put in place there to make sure that the ADA access was good, but it didn't, it, it didn't really hold up to the amount of use they get, and so we do need to replace those doors at some point. We don't really, I guess, one of the things, just to mention, we don't really have a facilities fund right now, and that's something we do need to start thinking about how we're going to do capital improvements on these facilities we have. We have a lot of projects we could be doing, and this is just one example of them. So that's something that we stuck under parks for now. Grant match for a rink rehab project. This is something that we wanted to do for a while, and we do have restricted funds in the budget for this project. We've talked about a couple of options. One is, is there's an opportunity that we might be able to get a chiller for the ice, which would significantly improve its operation. There's also some work we'd like to do on the boards. We'd like to get a fiberglass person to come in and do some repairs on them so they can be moved again. We've talked about some things that could help hold water better and some structural improvements just around the space. Nikki and her crew have been working over there quite a bit this year, and they've made some big improvements, which is great. But it's something that we want to continue and make sure that that facility, that we just keep working on it all the time. New playground equipment and surface for Chipita. We'd like to improve that playground. It's nearing the end of its, it's not really nearing the end of its life. It can still be taken care of, but it is probably starting to be time for a refresh, especially the surface. Our environment is just tough on playground surfaces and what we have installed there works, but it's also tough on knees. And so it'd be nice to be able to like improve that a little bit. And then I've got new side-by-side here. We have a gator that we've had for a while. It has some problems, and it's probably time to replace it. We may be able to get a used one cheaper than this. This is just kind of a working number. This is one of the things that could come, well, really, the playground could come from this too and possibly the rink. But, or in the, really, the skidster, all of this stuff except for the bathroom doors really could come from the CTF fund. And so that's one of the questions we have priority-wise about if we want to use that money to support any of these projects this year. If it's a playground, we may, you know, the, really, the big thing is what grants are available and what can we use as match? If there is an opportunity for that, I think we want to be flexible because that will improve our overall budget for that project.
So I, I want to add some stuff to this. So, um, the new bathroom doors, um, just for informational purposes. Nikki had given us an estimate of thirty five hundred dollars. And then really, the grant match and, and even the new playground equipment. Yes, we have that hundred and ten thousand, and you'll see that in future meetings, but we have that hundred and ten thousand from Boulder County Housing Authority for the Tungsten Village Development. And the thirty five thousand six hundred received from parking lease with, with Eldora, which was previously approved by the board to be set aside for park improvements. However, obviously, if we were to do any of that using, those are restricted funds, okay? That would make the general fund look worse by that much, whatever we decide here. So that's the two, you know, the grant match, you know, whatever we decide. Or if we use it for the new playground equipment, that's, that's a thought. We could do that. It would just decrease the the deficit in the general fund. And then what John had brought up, the new side-by-sides. So currently, um, in two thousand and twenty five, the Conservation Trust Fund has used no funds yet. Okay, so none of the sixteen thousand have been used. If we decide that we want to do this new side-by-side, which could be a Conservation Trust Fund expenditure, depending on what the board decide, decides, I will then, if we, because Nikki then would not use any funds in two thousand and twenty five. I would double that from sixteen thousand to thirty two thousand in two thousand and twenty six to, to allow her to potentially purchase this.
Got it.
Side-by-side. So those are some thoughts that.
Are the Conservation Trust Funds, are they restricted to the point that, I mean, can you use them as a grant match?
Yes.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's some, that's one of the policy questions. I think, you know, especially looking at the rink, like, that's probably one of our bigger priority areas right now to be thinking about. I guess I'm not going to speak for Proseb. I just think that's probably one of the things we want to be working on. One of the things we've talked about too, it would help us get grants for that if we did pay for a professional designer that facility. And there's companies like THK and Associates and other ones like that that do that work where we could come up with a shovel-ready design for maybe a, a pretty reasonable cost that would, you know, let us go out for grants with something that we can say this project's ready to roll kind of situation. That could be an option too, but I think also this whole thing with the equipment. Our parks team is, is pretty, is small but mighty, and they're really good at taking bites off, but they just don't have, you know, they, they could use some. It always comes down to like the tools do the job. That's part of the question. And so if we, we might, that's the balancing act here, I think, is making sure they can maintain their current capacity and keep what they're doing flowing, but also just thinking forward on, on what we're going to need as we kind of move into the future there. There's other parks projects too that could potentially happen. They are de facto facilities team for the most part. And there's things like the visitor center is going to need, it's going to need some work in the, in the coming days. Town Hall is another example that Parks works on that we're going to need to put some money into this building. Facilities are going to become increasingly a question for us, like how we budget for that and how we handle it. And I think it's just one of these things that when you think about the, the CTF funds, do you want to let them build up for a project? Do you want to kind of use them to subsidize operations? And how do we do that? And I think that's really the policy question.
Quick question on the rink plan, there, or the rink design, like there was a design posted up there on the wall at the rink for a while that laid out a, a new plan that they were raising money for, but.
It was conceptual, and I think what we'd need to do is advance something to a shovel-ready. And so probably also with the age of that plan, it would need some community engagement to make sure that facility meets the needs of the community. So I think that engaging in a plan with a starting point is probably a really great way to do it because you probably have some efficiencies there and save some, but we, we could come up with something, you know, the two thousand and twenty six version and then, and then progress it. Because there was some, you know, there's some, there's been thoughts about a roof there for a long time, and we've talked about sunshade system, but from an engineering perspective, how wide that rink is, the sunshade thing is probably something that needs to be engineered. I don't think it can be rigged. And so.
And with our rims.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Macy, can you mute whoever spoke?
So, yeah, that's all. I think what we could do is try to get to a plan that we could get grants, and, and if there's work we could do, I think that would be great too, but just try to update it and make it spiffy.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, you know, considering that, you know, the rink has the potential to bring in a lot of revenue, so investment in that is, you know.
Yeah.
Has a lot of value.
We think we could probably more than double the revenue it generates just with the chiller. And then if we were able to build some summertime operations that support the same thing and keep racket sports going and those kinds of things, I think there's some opportunities there for sure.
Then I apologize. I was writing, as you were discussing, the new playground equipment. Was that to make it ADA accessible?
That would be a big one. We've also talked about a playground that might cater to different needs a little bit better for, across that spectrum of need. So that could be part of it, the, the surface as well, like replacing the surface and then maybe doing a refresh and keeping it, you know, just a, a good asset for our kids.
Yeah, accessibility-wise.
Yeah.
Okay. So that particular goal was on our, that was identified back in two thousand and twenty five. It was to make Chipita Park, you know, ADA accessible and to replace the equipment. So what? Why, I guess, the blunt question is, why weren't we able to move forward with it then?
With a playground? We don't have the money for a playground.
Well, part of it was to pursue the grant funding for it.
There hasn't been a grant fund, there hasn't been a grant opportunity. You really need a shovel-ready design for that. So we really need to be thinking about that as part of the process. There needs to be funding for design work. We're not going to find a grant where somebody We're not going to find a grant where somebody just says, go ahead and go. Figure it out. It's, there is some planning grants from GOCO that we could maybe get for that, but it's. Those processes are pretty competitive and we're going to need to make sure that we're, we're ideally situated to. Try for funding, but also it's, I think, a bandwidth question and. You just can't do everything all the time, but that should be something that. We prioritize as in the plan.
Okay, so it would be for to design a shovel or a ready to go plan for Chupita Park.
I think that could be a good goal. We could work, I mean, you can do things like work with. Playground companies that they could, you know, and there's like, um, what's it called? There's, there's probably ways we can do that, but I think the design piece is really the. But it's also, we need to, I think, when it comes down to this, it comes down to prioritization of these projects and. Thinking about the whole overall scope. One of the things for our staff that's true is our teams are all. Very. Focused on the service delivery parts of their job. There's not a lot of capacity for them to be doing other work outside of that. Especially in the summertime for our parks team and our streets team. That isn't an excuse. It's more just saying we need to be thinking about our capacity to do those projects too and how we're going to. Execute on like these planning things. For, for these departments like and, and just kind of what that looks like so that we get, we can realistically meet the goal. But I think that that's something we can do in the strategic plan.
Yeah, and I asked because that was a goal that was actually surfaced from parks. Right? That was their, that was their goal. And so just trying to understand where the disconnect is and if, you know, like setting expectations so that, you know, we. We're both aware of where we're heading.
For sure.
And maybe it's also, you know, because that hundred and ten thousand, that's been there for quite some time and really it's.
It has been.
A board decision, right? What are we going to do with it?
Yeah.
You know, and is this the right time? But again. Just. To remind everybody. That will just. Whenever we do that, whenever the board decides to use that and ten and the thirty six thousand five hundred, that will just, um, you know, decrease the fund balance. That is correct. That is correct. Yes.
Oh, wow, that's in the general fund?
Yes. Yes. If, if, if we were to decide this year in 2026 to use it. That's correct. Exactly.
Whoever's talking, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I was just saying, since we can't use that money for anything else, that money doesn't really exist in the general fund. That, that exists in the park fund, but it cannot, cannot be used to pay town hall staff.
That is correct. So in other words, you know, looking at these CIP projects that are not currently budgeted, it could be used for that, right? Because yes, it's part of the fund balance, but the fund balance, as we all know now, is not great.
Okay. Oh, too far. Okay. Community Center and Streets Funds. Community Center, we've got a couple of things on tap here. One is five thousand dollars for new fire extinguishers. They have quite a few in this building. And they do need to be updated. So we have that budgeted and then also Dawn's here, so she can talk if you guys have questions. And then fifteen thousand dollars for grease trap maintenance and repair. The grease trap in this building is the original one that was built. When the Public Works Administration built this building. So y'all know how long ago that was and it's a basically concreted into the floor. And they've been doing a great job taking care of it, but what we need to do is just given its age, we need to make sure that we're. Constantly, we're just sitting on top of the maintenance and, and making sure it's working as effectively as possible. So we have a little bit of money for that. On the street side, the big thing is, is the culvert insulation replacement projects. And we did part of that this year. We did six culverts. Josh and the team have been working on maintaining our culverts, but there's still some in town that are. They're just timed to replace them. And so we've got forty thousand dollars scheduled for that. That's that capital. Improvement costs that you saw in their budget is just to do that project. There are some opportunities in streets for grants. There's a federal grant right now. That is, might allow us to use. Some more environmentally friendly products that could hold the roads together, but that's something we're kind of waiting. Sab might take up a conversation about that to kind of talk through these different products that could be available. And we'd want that to be correct before we do it, but. That would be something that could come later, just as a grant, and there's a no match for that. Do you guys have any questions about these two? Okay. Water and wastewater, these are the ones we've already talked about it a little bit. On the water side, we've got the fifteen thousand dollars for the SCADA upgrades, seventeen thousand five hundred for continued water main replace or water meter replacements. We've been doing pretty well with that. Our new Badger meters are really cool. They're cellular, which allows us to read them remotely, which is super helpful. On the wastewater side, a little bit more on the project list, five thousand dollars for tank cleaning and inspections. That's for our big water tanks that feed all the different neighborhoods. Fifteen thousand dollars for the SCADA upgrades, seventeen five for the water meter replacement project. So just split those projects across the two funds. And then fifty thousand dollars for distribution system improvements that you see in the water plan. And this is stuff like. Adding some looping into the, the system and just making sure that everything's working as well as it could and replacing pipes where they need to be replaced and things like that. This also, I guess, just to kind of reiterate the point. Our larger capital improvement plan, there could be other work that happens here. We could start executing that work. And I think it really boils down to the question is, do we want that, do we want to start the rate increase and start saving for those projects now? Or do we want to do it? Starting next year when we know our full revenue situation. Last slide here, this is just looking forward at the 2026 budget process. We know that the, by statute, the budget has to be adopted by December fifteenth. That's every year. We'd like to have the adoption of the budget happen on December second. And if you remember what happens, we'll have a hearing. That happens, the meeting before the adoption of the budget. So what we've got here is a hearing on the eighteenth. And then the adoption on the second. November fourth would be kind of the final budget presentation. I did note here that's election day. We haven't contemplated whether we want that meeting day on election day or not. I think it might be a good idea to move it just because of. What everybody will be doing that day. So we could talk about that. But that would be kind of the final draft presentation with all the deep, you know, everything and kind of the final form. On October twenty first, we've got a presentation of the budget detail and discussion. That's kind of like. Pretty close to final, I'd say of like everything. So you can see all the funds and all the different things that make them up. Right now we have a placeholder set on October seventh where we could have a bigger conversation and we also were contemplating a work session. On September thirtieth, where we could talk about the water wastewater rates. Maybe a little bit more about the capital plan, but specifically about the general fund. I didn't put this in here. We were talking about this this morning, so I apologize, but. Looking at the general fund in detail so that we can start looking at that deficit and what might make sense to cut so that we can be. Ready for that budget detail conversation. One note, I'd like to say we may have some other. Special meetings that need to happen. So the September thirtieth meeting might need to just fit within the greater scope of what the board's doing. But I do think a work session on that could be really useful. We could also schedule that on the October seventh meeting, just depending on how. Everything shakes out, just because what we really need to have is just that discussion. And so. It could go either way. It could be in discussion or it could be as a work session. But this is just our proposed calendar. This is the end of the presentation here. So if you guys have further questions about this or direction at this time. Or any notes about this calendar, we'd really appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none. Thank you for the informational item. Appreciate the work going into it. It's always. Such a fun time, this time of season. So appreciate everyone hanging in there. More to come, more excitement. All right, so we're going to go into our first action item of the night, which is the town donation. And volunteer policy. Looks like John, you're up.
Yep, one second, just switching over here. Well, what I've got for you today is the, we talked last at the September second meeting about the donation volunteer policy. Y'all had a couple of points of direction. Simplifying the drafts, making sure the evaluation criteria were consolidated and presented as clearly as possible. Making sure an appeal process was provided for applicants who were denied or deferred. Making sure that there's a conflict of interest provision and then kind of like. A standardized form like for what this might look like. So what I did is I went back through the policy and I tried to simplify the framework. It's not necessarily short, but I think for staff purposes, it is, it's simple. So it's really making sure that you guys agree with that, that idea that it's simple in that way. But what I did is I tried to. Kind of simplify it into three general types of projects and then really think through any additional issues that might need to come up. One thing that came up was, as I was thinking this through, is design and professional services. That may be a component of what we're doing moving forward, especially the kinds of projects that we've contemplated and talked about. There are times when there's going to have to be engineering or other professional things happening and they may be donated. That may also be as a part of a match for a grant. So I just wanted to cover that. That option. Donations linked to procurement processes. I think like what we might see at some point is if we have an RFP out, somebody might say. I'll do this project for a hundred thousand dollars less than anyone else and call that a donation. So I just want to make sure that we have a process. To make sure that we're evaluating that donation under our policy. And then unsolicited donations, this one is a little bit. Maybe me just. Chicken littleling to be a little, you know, just to be frank, like somebody is saying, this is a donation. It's a, it's a sculpture of some mattresses that I left in your park. And I just want to make it clear that if it is an unsolicited donation, that we have the ability to remove it. And also like if we know who did it, like if there's something that happens to town property, we still have the ability to use our enforcement to take care of it. And hold somebody responsible. So that's really the big changes here. There are more revisions in that. I, I really tried to work on the consolidation of the evaluation criteria and make sure that they're really clear. I assume in terms of the project types, it's all in the staff report, but I divided them into incidental projects. Which are very low risk and I was thinking specifically of the conversation chairs that the. That were put in the parks this summer, which are great and very easy and don't create any risk for the town. Then I have standard projects which are fairly modest, which might be like a picnic table or. Something like that, or a volunteer project like the cemetery cleanup, which doesn't really have. There's not much to it, just some kind of form that we can fill out to say that it happened and make sure that they're adequately thanked when that happens. And then complex projects, which are really. Things that, that would be bigger. So it'd be things like. That might need engineered plans or a formal agreement or a land donation, things that. Really do create either obligations or implications on future town policy, or that if we were doing a project, we would get review or engineering on. For the appeal process, I basically just left that with the board. What I said is if we deny or defer a project. What we would do is prepare an aim that would present all of the details of, of the how and the why of that. And then if they want to appeal that project, we'd provide that aim to the board and they'd be more than welcome to do that in a board meeting. And then the absolute decision about the project would lie with you. Conflict of interests, I just, I, this is pretty standard language. Just donations may not create actual or perceived favoritism. Or provide a primary private benefit, thinking like. Like. I put a parking pad, like a private parking pad on right away. That's not a donation of a trailhead or something. So that would be what we would look at is making sure it doesn't benefit just one person. Proposals outside adopted plans are evaluated on how they serve the broader community. Is it just one person or is it multiple people? Fair market value. I think that that's an important thing for us. For complex donations, I require it just supported by receipts, comparable bid, assessor valuation, professional estimates, which is typical how the IRS would do that. Standard and incidental donations. I was thinking like if somebody wants like a record of a donation, we would give them, we would work with them on that, but we wouldn't require it. Professional and regulatory review. If it would require engineering, building, zoning, land use, legal or risk review, if we initiated it, then it would still require that. This is the one where I think there might potentially be a deferral and it's mostly because if it's a budgeted process. We may have associated costs with that, that were covered in our budget. So like, for instance, we're going to do a trail somewhere. And we know somebody wants to donate for it, so we budget the costs for the review in our, in this process. If it's not budgeted, I think it would need to be deferred until that funding was identified or it was identified in the strategic plan or it came to the board for your appeal. Procurement consistency. All I'm meaning there is that if we have projects that do require procurement, they just go by town policy. That you guys just adopted at the last meeting. Okay, so that's all, just if. If it is a donation, if there is something that needs to happen in procurement, we just follow the policy. Insurance and work rules, they have to comply with our insurance and risk management requirements. So if it's something like that, we'd have a services agreement. Capacity definition and documentation, that's something I put in there. It just is our ability to deliver and maintain a project within work plans, strategic plan priorities, staffing levels, seasonal workload, management requirements. That includes the future, like the future maintenance. And so what I just said is if, if there is a thing where we have to defer a project, we would just document that name. And again, that would come to you in an appeal. With, with the why, why we thought there was a capacity issue. The thing about unsolicited donations. Deferral tracking and transparency. I think that it's reasonable if we do have deferred projects to log those. And review during strategic planning processes, just to see if that person is still interested and if we can budget accordingly. Standardized and scalable form. I built a couple of forms there. I put. Very minimal effort into them, to be honest. I tried to show kind of structurally what they would look like. Forms need to change over time too. So I just want to leave us, you know, I, I wanted to kind of give an idea of what they would look like, but we would dress them up and make them pretty. And then. Over time, they would probably evolve, but the criteria would not. In terms of the policy framework that's in the staff report, what I tried to do is just kind of show. What the criteria are, kind of what the process would look like in the approval authority. And then lastly, all I've got is just next step. So there's really, you know, three options here. If you guys are ready to approve this policy, you can do so. If you'd like to continue with some more direction to staff about how you'd like to handle this, I have a motion for you for that. And then if you are not interested in this, I also left that option as well. So. I think that we are. I hope that this is dialed toward of to the, kind of where you guys were talking about. I think my overall goal here was to keep it as simple as possible. And I think this process could be relatively simple. I don't think there's going to be that many complex projects that really require a bigger process, but when they do, we want to just make sure we have that covered. So that's what I've got for you. If you have questions for me or comments, I'm happy to take them.
All right. Any clarifying questions for Town Manager Kane? Any trustees online who have clarifying questions? All right, with that, we'll move to public comment. In the room first, is there anybody who wants to provide a public comment on the donation policy? Seeing none, let's go to online. If there's anyone online who'd like to provide a public comment to our donation policy. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and or a motion. I'll just start off, thank you for making those changes. I like seeing an appeal process in there, you know, for the fact that. Somebody could bring it to us if they decided that they needed to. I think you're correct in stating that a majority of these volunteer project or these donation projects are not going to be that complex. And so it kind of bypasses a majority of this process.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's really clear. I think it's generally really concise. It seems like it's pretty simple too. Sometimes shorter doesn't mean simpler. This feels simple and clearly written. So thank you for making those changes. The only thing that I would, that I just noticed, and the only reason I'm bringing it up is because it will be a public facing document, is under policy evaluation criteria. Number five is repeated at number seven. So I'd be, you know, I'm leaning towards approving this with an amendment deleting. Number seven under policy evaluation criteria. Yeah, no, no. Exactly, yeah.
All right, any other comments, discussion items?
I move to approve the town and underland donation and volunteer policy as presented.
Second. Wait. With the amendment?
As presented with the amendment.
Got it. Second.
All right, Cass, will you take role?
I guess I'll do it. First time doing this. Let's see. Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling, or Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Corvilon?
Yes.
And can you remind me who made the motion and who seconded?
Sure. Yep, he made the motion. Trustee Larson made the motion, and Trustee Maris seconded.
Okay, thank you. And the motion passes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Way to just dive right in. I appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you. Trustees, I'm going to take a little poll right now. If you would like a break and go to the bathroom for seven minutes, or if you'd like to keep going. All right. We, any, any objections to just powering through and keep going, Trustee Corvilon or Trustee Ty?
No, it's great, whatever you mean.
All right. All right, then we're coming up to our second action item, the MEMV Capstone Program Proposal. Cass?
Thank you. All right, so this is the kind of draft version of the Capstone proposal that is attached to this aim. But just as a reminder, the University of Colorado's Masters of the Environment Program has a Capstone project that their students do every year. And the students essentially serve as external consultants addressing real world sustainability challenges. One of their specializations is urban resiliency and sustainability. And so there's quite a few students interested in that topic and wanting to do projects on that topic. I brought this to the board a couple, a couple times now, gotten some feedback from the Sustainability Advisory Board. And the plan was to develop a proposal to, for a resiliency plan that would be used potentially in conjunction with other plans at a later date, but to keep things within the limited time and scope that the Capstone program has. We talked about pursuing a resiliency plan that is action oriented. The comprehensive plan does reference resiliency in basically all parts of it. It's a part of the framework. And so that's another reason that this is, has been kind of the focus of a potential action plan. So if the, if the proposal as it stands is accepted, the project will do a few different things. I created a proposal that basically outlined that the students will review and synthesize existing documents. As we talked about, we have multiple different plans that were created by the town as well as by other entities in conjunction with the town. And all of these plans have a lot of overlap and different priorities amongst the strategies. And it can be kind of overwhelming to figure out what part of the plans are the most, should be prioritized the most, or are the most important to the community. So trying to synthesize these documents and come up with also some kind of community engagement to figure out like which strategies are, should be acted upon the soonest. Identifying gaps and triangulating data across these plans to, yeah, clarify priority areas, developing a funding guidance and actionable steps to support implementation and compile that into a practical matrix. So that really is just coming up with a very easy to use, easy to read matrix that shows the most prioritized strategies or action items based on like all of the information and interviews that the students will gather, and putting that into something that is very usable, very easy for anyone looking at it to to understand where we're at. Conducting an economic resiliency assessment to understand the risks and opportunities for the Netherland local economy, and then also producing just a final resiliency plan that basically has all of those items along with timelines and a summary of community recommendations. The Capstone team would work closely with town staff, mostly myself and Britt Dimink, the community planner. They would also ideally interact with the board and interview other advisory boards as well, and community members to ensure that this plan reflects local needs and priorities of the town. The final deliverables would be the resiliency plan, the implementation matrix, and a community engagement summary. And then they would do presentations to the board and the public, maybe in a town hall setting, depending on what we come up with. The one thing I wanted to note is that when I sent this draft proposal to Alice, who is the Capstone Program Coordinator, she did suggest that including an economic resiliency resiliency assessment would be potentially to make the project too broad, and that she's not sure that they would be able to complete everything, including that. And so she recommended maybe making that assessment optional. I also talked with Erica Thorley, who is on our Sustainability Advisory Board and also is working with the Capstone Group for the Town of Erie's Resilience Action Plan. And Erica suggested making economic resilience a lens in which the students view basically all of these projects and priorities. And that way, you don't necessarily need to have it be its own assessment, but it can just be incorporated across the entire plan. And so I wanted to share that with you. The the other thing that I didn't include in the aim, but that Erica shared with me was that the students did a vulnerability assessment for the Town of Erie. And so I thought that could also be something that we put in there as like maybe optional for the students to conduct if they think it makes sense.
All right, thank you, Cass. Any clarifying questions regarding the proposal before us? Any trustees online have clarifying questions?
I do not.
All right, seeing that there are no clarifying questions, let's go to public comment. Anyone in the room want to give public comments on the Capstone project proposal? Seeing none, we'll go online. If there's anyone online who would like to give a public comment on this proposal? Please unmute. All right, we will bring it back to the board for discussion and/or motion. Thoughts on the, you know, what's the proposal before us? Because Cass, like you said, it's been in a couple of iterations. Now we have it before us. We had talked about the resiliency last time. It was offered as a suggestion in combination with a lot of other suggestions. And so it looks like this is where we've landed. I'd be interested thoughts from trustees in terms of how they're liking this, where it's shaped out to be now, or any comments or thoughts and further tweaks?
Yeah, I mean, overall, I, I'm good with this as a, as an option. And I think that getting it moving, I know our timeline isn't super long, so getting this moving as of tonight, I think is a good way to go. And I feel okay with kind of tackling some of the other potential projects next year, you know, and if we can get through this one, that would be great.
Anyone else?
Cass, just to clarify, so the, what you're kind of suggesting or you're asking us is, is it okay to to basically delete the economic resiliency assessment as suggested by Alice, who kind of runs the program?
Yeah, and or she suggested making it optional. So it could, I could just put it in there as like, if this is something they're really excited about, or they see like being way more valuable than some of the other things, then maybe they include it.
Great. Okay. Yeah, I, I think it's a great, kind of a great proposal. I think the idea of making that part optional sounds fine to me. I think after just having our budget discussion, economic resiliency is at the forefront of my mind. So I would love to get more feedback, especially from kind of students who, you know, are doing, are kind of endless and spending a lot of time working on it. But if it's optional, that's fine with me. It's going to be something we're going to have to deal with anyway. And I like Erica's idea, too, of it being kind of a lens, like reframing it a little bit. But I kind of defer to whatever the, whatever Alice suggested, since she's someone that's going to be part of this selection process, I imagine, too. So I think it's a great proposal. I think it aligns with what we need to have happen next, especially with kind of triangulating things and making sure things are aligned and identifying the things that have to happen next.
Regarding the community engagement summary, the key findings from outreach to ensure resident priorities are reflected, is that going to be additional? That's going to be like them actually reaching out to community members?
So that was the idea, was after performing kind of like a, a study of the different plans that we have, then going to community members and kind of determining, okay, what do, what from these resilient strategies do community members see as being like the most important or the most timely to them? That was kind of my thinking.
Okay, got it. So after combining all of them, then having that prioritization list. Okay.
Yeah.
As long as, I just wanted to make sure that things weren't going to be duplicated. Like, we've already got the outreach for housing, we've got the outreach for multimodal, we've got the outreach for sub area plan and everything. As long as there's new sort of insights and priorities that are being discussed, then that works for me.
Okay. Yeah, and they'll be under a lot of supervision. So I'll make sure like that is related to them, for sure.
All right. Officer Cass on duty. Love it. Okay. Any further clarifying question, or excuse me, discussion that the board would like to have? All right, I move to approve applying for the CU Boulder. How do they pronounce that? MEMV?
Oh, M E N V.
Just that, yeah, it's always been spelled out. M E N V, Capstone Program for Netherland Resiliency Plan, taking into consideration the amendments that you might want to make by making the economic resiliency optional.
Second.
All right, Macy?
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Ty?
Trustee Ty, can you just repeat if you were a yes or a no?
Yes.
I heard it.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Corvilon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Mayor Billy, we haven't heard you. Are you a yes? All right.
He's having connectivity issues. I can note for the record that he wasn't able to vote this time around.
No problem.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, everyone, we are on to our last and final action item of the night, the Boulder County Circular Economy Funding Opportunity. And for this one, we are back to Cass.
Thank you. So at our last discussion about this funding opportunity, we talked about a few different options. And we also acknowledged that the deadline for applying for this grant is September 30. And that's why this is coming back as an action item, even though there, we didn't necessarily make a decision at the last meeting about which option to go with. But I was directed to look into AI powered smart bins for sorting trash and recycling and compost, and specifically looking at having these at events and the Netherland Farmers Market potentially. So after doing some research, there was really only one company that I found that was doing AI powered smart bins that would kind of suit our needs if we wanted to have them at events, because there are a lot of considerations, including like, can they be outside? How easy are they to move? Can they be moved a lot? Because some of them have sensors that could get, you know, broken or jostled around if you're moving them a lot. So the Amaru AI powered smart bins turned out to be kind of the best option if we wanted to go with this route. And it also can serve as a public education resource if we partner with the farmers market on some outreach. So basically, the, the proposal that I'm, that I put together has the Amaru smart bins kind of as a, as a pilot project with the Netherland Farmers Market, so partnering with them to have a booth at all the main markets, and having one of the bins at the booth, that's kind of like the designated waste station booth, and talking to people about how it works, as well as what can and can't be recycled in Boulder County. And so having that be like a conversation starter. And then also having these bins hopefully stationed elsewhere during the rest of the week, and then during the winter when there is no farmers market. That is a bit trickier to figure out, just because one of the main locations I was thinking was the community center. And talking with Dawn about that, there's a lot of logistics that we'd have to work out, which I think could be doable. But it sounds like with events and with peak times, the, the bins might get filled up more quickly than they're able to basically replace the bags. And that might not work out so well, having them at the community center. My other thought is partnering with like Hubned or the Teen Center, and having the bins stationed there, so they're at least being used, and they're still like having public visibility. And then we just move them every weekend for the farmers market. And that way, they're still being used, and we can still collect data on how people are throwing away their waste and that sort of thing. Some of the cool features of these bins is that you can sort based on different categories, and you can modify those categories. So it doesn't matter if like another county or state was using these bins, and they, you know, accept plastic takeout containers, and we don't, because we can actually change the settings on the bin so that it will throw that into the trash versus the recycling. It can also detect if the materials are soiled or have like food on them. And Boulder County doesn't accept, you know, like, plastic with, with a bunch of food waste on it, so that would go into the trash. And those sorts of things would also be like educational points, because if someone came to the booth and said, oh, I have this, like, I want to, I want to recycle it, then I could say, okay, if you want that to go into the recycling, you're going to need to clean it off first, or, you know, whatever else is needed. Like, empty the liquid out is a big one. A lot of people don't empty the liquid out from their like soda containers, and it can't be recycled if it has the soda in it. Yeah, so there's a lot of little things, but it actually can adapt to those different, those differences, which is great. It also can detect organic like food waste, so it can have a compost section, which is awesome. And it, they also come with like an extra, basically, the main component is this like tipping mechanism where you put the item in the middle, it detects what it is, and then it tips it into the correct bin. it tips it into the correct bin. And it hasn't, it comes with an extra one, basically, in case it breaks. So that's pretty nice. They already know that like, that's the most likely to break, they're going to send it with us. I would say the downside to this is just the cost. The company, I believe, is in like Bulgaria or something. And the, the company that was the closest was like, it was in California, so it was US, but like, it just, it did not make any sense, basically, for what we needed. So this, this company, it would come with import duty fees, which increases the cost a lot. And essentially, the, the project cost without kind of all of the extra things like bags and signage and, and other things that might go into this project is about seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the, the max amount we can ask for, from this grant is thirty thousand dollars, so it still falls within that. Yeah, the, I think this program would work well, especially for partnering with the community, or sorry, partnering with the farmers market, and then hopefully partnering with another location to have the bins just available continuously. The one thing that we do need to consider is just manpower. So even though the bin can sort itself, we still need someone to move the bin back and forth, since they can't be left outside. And we'll need someone to change the bags out. We'll need, if we want to have them at the farmers market with an outreach tent, then like, that would be me basically being there on Sundays. And so that would need to be something that I think the Board of Trustees is on board with, just like making sure you know that I would be spending hours doing that. And is that something that you want me to spend time on during the week? And also just managing it otherwise at the, wherever the other locations are.
Could you also have the Teens Inc. folks, like the youth, also have ownership over it and?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if I can talk with teens and get them on board to like have them at the high school when they're not at the farmers market, then I, I don't see why we couldn't work with them to create some kind of like zero waste monitoring program. But I would need to, you know, check with them.
Right. Yeah, same at the high school. If it was at the high school, having the youth take ownership of them as well, changing the bags, that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah. Clarifying questions for, from the group. My first one is looking at the budget. There's no like support line item, like if something else breaks, what is the plan to get that assessed?
Yeah, so there is a warranty. It's a two-year warranty, and that, that covers replacement parts.
Okay, so it's just parts, or is it the software or anything like that? What extent does it go?
Well, so the software, we pay a subscription. So it's two hundred and eighty dollars per unit per year, which is honestly very cheap compared to like some of the other, yeah, some of the other ones. I, it does a great job at like keeping track of the waste. I think it was, some of the other softwares are able to like track how full the bins are. I don't think this one can do that. So that's like an, a downside, obviously. But yeah, I believe the two-year warranty is just parts. And then I was told, and I can definitely clarify this, but I was told that like, as updates occur, and they have more and more items put into like their database, then that all gets translated to the software through our subscription.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions from the trustees? All right, any clarifying questions from the trustees online? All right, let's go to public comment. Let's go to public comments. Any public comments in the room regarding this grant proposal for AI-powered sorting bins? All right, seeing none in the room, let's go online. Anybody online would like to make a public comment regarding this topic? All right, again, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for comments, discussion, and/or motion.
I got some comments. Because I've been looking at this company here, and this thing looks like a piece of junk. It looks incredibly fragile for, you know, eighteen thousand dollars. No, I appreciate the work you done. You don't get me wrong. I don't, this is in no way reflects on Cassidy or, you know, but an eighteen thousand dollar for two trash cans that I seriously doubt would last the summer. And if it did, you're just creating more trash. This AI nonsense on this. We all know, A, this, the AI that they're talking about, you know, updating their models, continuing. So they are continuing to waste massive amounts of water, electricity, the impact on the grid, on the environment from trying to train some trash model is so far above what minor gains we get from these tiny little trash cans, that it would be offset any possible gain. If we had eighteen, ten, eighteen thousand dollars to spend on this, which I know is free money from the county, it's not our money, whatever, but we could spend fifty bucks for a bunch of trash cans and pay those students fifty dollars an hour to stand at every farmer's market and every public event and do this for much like, you know, half the cost. And then we'd have the education, and we'd have the impact of this without junk like this. The fact, the odds of this company lasting their two-year warranty period are so slim that this would be a ridiculous waste of money on our part, on the county's part, and I am an absolute hard no on it.
Okay. Any other conversations? Any other comments?
Yeah, just, I mean, it's, it's a little different, but um, the county spent all that money on that composter up at the transfer center, and it's really not panned out really well. And I think some things happened hopefully this past week with the manufacturers coming to spend time there and service it. But yeah, that, that's kind of, you know, it's a different kind of machinery, but it kind of hasn't worked out well so far. I, yeah, it is, it is curious whether, this does seem like a lot of money for relatively, for what we get out of it.
So just to clarify, Mayor Billy, you're saying that the composter was a lot of money, and it's not panning out to what we want it to do, or what it to be?
Or what it to be?
Yeah, so that was a county.
That was a county.
Oh, sorry, help us, I mean, that was a county expense, and um, not ours directly, but it affects us. But I do know, like, it kind of hasn't gone well. And, you know, and, and I, I think, I mean, even though a composter and a sorter are different pieces of machinery, altogether, it, it's just kind of like an example of spending a bunch of money on something automated where, in this case, like, the, the technical support was kind of lacking, and now they're making it happen. Yeah, or, um, the technical support was lacking, but now, you know, they had the people that, you know, the, the people who serviced that machine. Ty probably knows more about this, because he sometimes works up there. But those folks were going to be here for like a week to service it and get it back up and running, but it's already kind of not gone well. And it's apples and oranges, you know, when it comes to two different types of machinery, but it's kind of similar in like spending a bunch of money on some technology, which, you know, ma- maybe doesn't do the job well enough to justify the money.
I'm going to try something new. Are you still getting an echo?
Uh, no, actually, we can hear you now.
Well, no, never mind.
We are, we are still getting an echo.
Okay, I'll try to say this really quick. The, it's getting better. I do know that I, I've done work on it. It's gotten a little bit better. I'm glad the manufacturers are out here to, so we can show them, hey, this isn't working right, but it is getting better.
I guess I just want to clarify, because I think maybe Trustee Larson, you weren't here at the last meeting. We actually suggested this to Cass. So just so you know, we had been talking about this grant proposal, and where we could use the money most efficiently and effectively, because there were some other proposals as well, and we weren't sure what we wanted to do, and we wanted to explore this as an option. So just to give you that background. Cass, one thing that I, so it was smart to go to their website. Good idea, Trustee Larson. And I'm just curious, it looks like they are a pretty new company, and I can't really find any reviews about them. Have you had any interaction with the company?
Uh, yes, I had an hour-long meeting where they showed me a live demo and answered all my questions, showed me, like, when I asked, well, you know, how does it know the difference between this and that? They showed me like how it identifies it, how to customize it. They showed me when you put two different pieces of materials in the bin, that it identifies that there are, is mixed waste, and it puts it all in the trash, which leads to less contamination in the recycling bin. If it were to put like a plastic bottle in a soiled napkin, it doesn't put that all in the recycling, right? So like, ideally, that reduces contamination at the source, which is a plus. So it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. Yeah, I, I know that they said that they're, they did a rollout at the Heathrow Airport in London, and they said that they have other global rollouts. So I think while it's, doesn't seem to be a thing that municipalities or really the US is doing, it does seem to be something that the rest of the world is doing, maybe because tariffs aren't as bad over there for shipping, but yeah.
Well, typically, Europe always seems to be several steps ahead from an environmental standpoint than the, the United States, just in terms of trying these technologies.
The other companies I found were European, and then there's one Canadian company. So really, the only one that was in the US was a California-based one, and their entire model was based on having ads from large brands be like the driving force. And it just, it didn't seem like something Netherland would be into, in my opinion.
Yeah. And, and just for context for Trustee Larson, so, you know, because we did talk about some of these other options of, you know, having folks available, you know, standing by the, the actual bins. And part of the conversation there is just actually, you know, finding people, or no, actually, one of the such suggestions was like the compost bin that sits on your kitchen table, or, or your kitchen counter. It just becomes a bucket when, you know, there was, how do you, how do you really determine that they're going to get used, other than just become a bucket for something else? There was the idea floated of having actual students, you know, stand by cans, finding the people, managing them, and then there was something, some other components with it.
Paying, paying them and then having sustainable funding for that in the long term.
Having sustainable funding in the long term, was that what you were going to add to it? Okay, right. And so, and so many of these things were sort of discussed in detail at that last, at the last meeting. Sorry, and you see something else?
And I think it was also that we weren't sure if something like that with kind of such a limited scope would be funded through this program.
Because the other piece of it is that infrastructure is what was prioritized to be funded.
This is an infrastructure.
Yeah.
Not enough, it's moving around from site to site and things like that. This thing, you want to talk about sustainable funding, when these things go out of warranty in two years and break, we've just wasted twenty thousand dollars.
So it did fit the description from an infrastructure.
I'm not, I'm not saying it doesn't, but I'm also saying perhaps we don't need to chase every little nonsense idea like this. We have big issues and, you know, sure, we should, we should be doing things, but like, you know, recycling the plastic, we know is, is a scam anyway. Plastic recycling is a scam, and trying to then throw more electricity at that, we're chasing the wrong thing here.
And just to clarify, we, I would say it's not the, the feelings of every board member to say that bringing this grant to us is a nonsense thing.
I did not, I don't mean that. And I have already said that Cass, you know, that, and I recognize that you guys requested this, that's, that was your choice. I agree. I wish I'd been here to argue against it then. That is not the nonsense thing. The nonsense thing is these trash cans. That is the piece of nonsense.
Okay, that's all right. Any other thoughts or discussion on it? Trustee Corvalon, I don't think that we've heard from you yet. And then Trustee Miller, I haven't heard back from you.
I'm just curious, what is the ability to withstand the outdoors for these things? The, we talked about this at the farmers market meeting, and you were going to look into it, maybe you mentioned it, but.
Yeah, that's a great question. So really, none of them are set up to withstand like hail and basically the most extreme weather. I would say that this one is the most durable in terms of moving, it looks like. All the other ones seemed much more fragile and needed to be like stationary in an office setting, if that's what they were designed for. These ones are designed to be in public spaces, and like if they're jostled around, they'll be fine. Like they showed, he showed me how he could pick it up by himself, but like, yeah, I think out of all the options that I was able to find, this one made the most sense for being outside. And obviously, when we do have them at the farmers market, we would have like a tent over it, you know, make sure that it's still being taken care of.
Okay, so it needs to be under a tent. Okay.
Ideally.
Yeah. Well, I mean, your other ideas were the compost buckets, um, this, but with the human component. And then there was another, there was a second idea. It was, what was the second idea of last week's meeting?
Was it like the study? There was some kind of study that we wanted to?
Yeah, and, and
Have people do?
And the study wasn't, was likely not going to get funded. And, yeah, and, and I think that was the downside, was like, we would be able to purchase the equipment, the bins, the bags, but then like having someone actually do the waste audit, which is very time-consuming, and not to mention not pretty to do, is, even if we were to pay like a consultant or something, I don't think that it would necessarily be competitive for funding, right?
Gotcha. So with these things being outside, it's not going to null the warranty or anything, right? Because farmers markets are outside, and there is sideways rain that happens.
I did tell the person that I was speaking to what our idea was, just to make sure that they were aware, because a lot of the other companies were saying, no, you shouldn't move them, you shouldn't have them outside. And he was saying, yes, they should work outside, as long as, you know, they're not in extreme weather conditions. So I think that's the idea behind like keeping them at like Teens Inc. or somewhere else indoors the rest of the time.
Oh, sure, yeah, not for the winter. Well, I mean, I hear what Trustee Larson's saying that, you know, we're so used to now, anything we buy, a washing machine, a dishwasher, if it lasts three years, you know, that's almost a good thing now. So it is a little concerning that we would buy something this expensive that might have the same sort of fate. So, but I, I do appreciate your research, and I think it is a cool idea. I know when you went to the market, farmers market meeting, everybody was, when you laugh, they're like, oh, this would be great in theory, because it's incredibly hard to find volunteers to man those trash containers. And literally, every, you know, you were, the, here's the, the thing. Netherland asks for these groups to be zero waste, yet we have Trustee Larson saying that it's all just a scam, and that it all goes to the same place anyway. So at that point, why do we even bother? Why don't we just have one giant big trash can, right? Where, I mean, I compost at home, and I recycle at home, and I separate all my stuff, and I feel like it's not a scam, and that it's actually doing something. But if the town and net is going to hold these events to a different standard that a home is held to, or a business is held to, then it's, it's almost an impossible standard, because they, there is no way these things are ever properly sorted out. It's a disaster at the end of every event, and, and then everything ends up going to the landfill, like it or not, because there is nobody there watching that can be there. We, nobody can hire people, there's not any money, and there's no volunteers. And, and so this might be the only way this could ever happen. So I'm, I'm willing to give it a shot in this prototype sort of scenario, simply because we have tried it the other way. And without somebody standing there, literally every minute. of the day, which is hard for most events to do, it gets, becomes a jumbled mess. So, you know, Netherlands wants a zero waste event. This might be the only way to actually get it to happen. And if we could give it to other events, um, who are trying to also create zero waste, that'd be great. And if it breaks and it's a piece of junk, well, I expect it probably to be a piece of junk because everything made right now is a piece of junk. I haven't seen a single quality thing made anywhere in the world in the past five years. But with, I'm willing to give it a shot. I appreciate all your work towards this because I know you are very diligent and you keep coming back with new ideas and I respect that. I, I mean, I, I think there are probably other directions in the future we could go besides recycling, but this is a good thing for now.
Thank you.
Trustee Miller?
All right. So, you know, I think where it's pretty clear, the only thing that actually works is to have somebody in the middle between the person who is throwing away their trash and the bin. Right? Like that's the only thing that works, which is why a lot of the, you know, places that are really committed to this, like you don't, they don't even have trash bins. You put your bin, you, you put your trash on a tray or a rack or something and somebody else sorts it. Right? Cause it's the only, the only thing that actually works. Barring that, the, the actual benefit I see of this is that it has this novelty factor, which will catch people's attention and you're going to get people who, you know, want to play with it, see if it's right, you know, and, and if all it does is just kind of turns up people's awareness a little bit of, oh, sorting this stuff like is a thing. I think it would be effective. And if it lasts two summers of farmer's markets, you know, that's, that's a pretty good number of people interacted with. So, you know, as somebody who deals with a lot of, you know, machine learning AI stuff a lot, like it's getting better really fast, right? And because this is software based, you know, it probably will get better over the course of the time that we have it, assuming the company stays in business. There would definitely be a couple of questions like, what happens if they do go out of business? Like, will it just not work at all? Or will it just kind of continue with the working the way it was? You know, are we sort of like reliant on their subscription service for it to work at all, right? Like, and that would be kind of a concern that we would spend a bunch of money on it and then they close up six months later and, you know, left with the useless hunk of stuff. But aside from that, I think that it, whether or not it actually lasts long-term or even whether it's effective, it, it will help raise awareness, which is kind of the main goal. So. And yes, a lot of the recycling is kind of a joke, like most of our recycling ends up in the trash, even if you sort it. So. I think that's something we could do that might help here is to kind of explain to people like what happens to your recycling and your compost in Boulder County. That's something that Western Disposal has done a couple of times that I think has been kind of effective where they talk about, like in most places, recycling, even glass is not that effective because it's heavy, it's hard to ship. And because we have Coors in Golden who uses a ton of glass, like it, it's actually viable here as opposed to a lot of places where it's not. And, you know, what happens to your compost? Where does it go? How does it get reused? So that people kind of understand like, you know, it's not just some magic, not trash bucket, right? Like this actually goes somewhere and something happens to it. And, you know, for us specifically, like your glass is probably going to end up at Coors or Anheuser-Busch in Fort Collins. Like that's where it's going to go. So, and honestly, most of our paper and cardboard doesn't get recycled. So. But it's good to be honest about that stuff and let people know like what actually works. So I think that coupled with some, you know, AI novelty to catch people's attention might make it worthwhile.
So you'd be willing to move forward?
Yeah, I mean grudgingly, but yes, I think that it's, it's worth a shot.
Okay.
Assuming that, yes, like, I mean, I would say that's definitely a caveat that if it would cease to work upon, you know, the software service, you know, not being available, that would be kind of a deal breaker.
Uh, trustee Maris.
I, I definitely hear Chris's concerns, both about how this technology will work and whether it is, will just end up just becoming defunct. Also have mixed feelings about AI generally. So I completely understand the concerns. But on the other hand, I do also think that there are new technologies out there. And if we just assume that they're not going to work, then we might be missing out on opportunities. And I think it's important to do due diligence and I think Cass has done a lot of that. And I feel like there, we've done enough due diligence that it is worth a shot. So I'm leaning towards where, where Luke and Tanya are.
All right, let's move online. Billy and trustee Ty, Mayor Billy, we haven't heard from you or trustee Ty.
I think Chris brings up a good point about this, you know, the general resource, the goods and the making such things. And just the unknown about, you know, its net benefit. I, I think Luke just said something though, that really caught my ear, which is like turning it into part of a whole education piece. It sounds like Western disposal has done that in the past, but you know, and maybe whether it's, you know, them or, you know, Boulder County or Green Girl or, or a combination, but getting and continued kind of education about what, what really does happen down the line with our recycling. And, and, you know, the state right now is looking at slashing some. I know it's up, I, I believe it's up to like even on a state level where they're looking at like budget cuts in this, in this direction. But I think in general, you know, for us to be moving that way as a town, as a, you know, and as a state, that is, you know, as a country, it is a good way to go to just reuse things. So I think if, if it's, if it's a good, to the degree it catches people's attention and gives us an ability to educate. You, you know, one-on-one is what maybe also with some, you know, events on education that then it's maybe, you know, it's worth it, even if the machine isn't worth 18,000 bucks. You know, may, maybe the effort is, so I lean towards saying, yeah, voting yes on this effort. I do know, we did talk about the other three options and of the three or of, of the three options we talked about, this seemed like the most viable. So thanks for your work, Cass.
And trustee Ty, anything you'd like to add? Trustee Ty, we don't hear you if you're speaking. Okay, it's not just me. Nobody hears him. Okay. All right. So then my opinion on this is that, you know, other folks have already brought up some points and I won't repeat those. I think that because of also the constraints of what that we are going, or what the grant asks for, I think that this sort of, that this fits within that, those confines. And that it is novel, it is something to potentially try. Here's what we can do though, we can negotiate the warranty. You could always negotiate the warranty. So why don't you go back to them and ask for five years? A five-year warranty. And that could potentially put many, much more folks at ease. But during these conversations, I do always like to bring up the fact that we have to look at our entire digital footprint, not just AI footprint that we all sort of have. And one of those things is Netflix and YouTube is insurmountably more impactful to the environment than AI workloads that we run. And so I want to take this as an opportunity for us to be aware of that, that there are a lot more other things in our personal lives that we do that have a huge environmental impact. Town manager Kane, I see.
I had a question. It's kind of for Cass, honestly. These bins are cool. I, I think you did a good job on what you did here. So thank you for working so hard on this, even working with all our boards too, which is great and I appreciate that. I just have a question. In terms of the actual bin selection, is it possible to go into the grant with like a little bit of agnostic choice still left about what the final section is, say we're leaning this way, but like, uh, Mayor Potem Sterling just said, if something comes up where there's a solution that kind of matches the warranty or something like that, where it might be possible to change if you decide to change it when the funding is here or?
Are you talking about like the company that?
Yeah, like, just like the bin selection, just say, this is the one that we think best meets our needs, but it may turn out over the course of like our, you know, like she said, as you talk to people, maybe you decide you wanted something else. I was just wondering if that's something they would accept that there's a little bit of choice left.
I am not sure on that. I can definitely check. I think what I saw in the application materials is a, you need a quote, like an actual official quote for it. And that goes into the budgeting and everything. And, and since the pricing of the bins really does, it, it changes drastically. Like I, I saw, you know, a, one of them was 12,000, they're all in euros. 12,000 euros versus this one is like 4,000 euros versus another had like a subscription for 2,000 euros every year. Um, I'm not sure if they would accept that ambiguity in like the actual bin type.
Okay, might be worth an ask, just to.
I can definitely ask.
But regardless, we can, let's, let's go back to Amaru and ask to, um, for a five-year warranty. Tell them that's what your board would feel most comfortable with.
Yes.
And if they can stand behind their product, then they'll give it.
Yeah.
And if they've already got launches out in Heathrow Airport, right? They're, they're needing to, they're needing to show the viability of their product. So.
Yeah, I agree.
So with that, it sounds like we have four nods for you to move forward. Or it's an action item, excuse me. Do I have a motion?
Real quick on motions, I mean, do we want to put that five-year stipulation on our motion?
I think that we ask for it, see what we get. I mean, if it's still two years, I think everyone's willing, like there is a comfort level to move forward even at the two years, just to give it a go, give it a try. But if we can get five years, I think it's even better.
Okay.
And can we make the motion with the amendment, like John said, with like, you know, this is our best test or whatever, I forget exactly how he framed it, but you know, this is the product we think best meets our needs at the moment, but it might change. Like, I don't know how to.
Yeah, I think that one was, you were going to just ask Boulder County.
Yeah, I'll need to ask them.
If it's, so I think, okay, so the motion would have in it, hey, we're going to ask for five years. We'll be fine with two years, but we're also going to ask if there is some flexibility in the company that we ultimately move forward with. Did I capture that, Luke? Okay. And let me.
So would we basically, I mean, looking at the motions, um, as they're scripted, would we basically make a motion and just not state Amaru? And just say, I move to approve da, 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 smart bins at Ned Farmer's Market? Keeping it open.
Sure. I mean, that makes sense.
To potentially another company. All right. I move to approve applying for the Boulder County Circular Economy Fund for implementing smart bins at the Netherlands Farmer's Market.
And asking for five-year warranty?
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure about, okay. And asking for a five-year warranty from the concessionaire.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Macy.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Maris. Yes.
Yes.
Ty, go ahead and meet yourself. Sorry, thank you.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
No.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Sterling.
Yes.
Thank you all. The motion's approved.
All right. And so now, um, thank you again, Cass. Appreciate it. Now we're moving on to our discussion item, which is the 2026 strategic planning process. John?
Well, Mayor and trustees, after your last meeting, I developed this staff report to kind of talk about some frameworks for goal setting for you guys for this next process that we're moving into. At your last conversation, we talked about how, you know, the plan is more than just a to-do list. It's establishing the framework for the town's 2026 work program, aligning staff and financial resources with the board and making sure that, um, we have measurable outcomes and that we're flexible when we have changing conditions. You all have identified several goals through discussion, through planning documents and direct input. I did get a couple of emails from you all, um, over the last two weeks that I've been, tried to include in this staff report. The next step in this process would be to prioritize and frame these goals so that we can really focus on what matters next. One of the things I wanted to note again, that was in my last staff report is this acquisition and integration of Eldora into the town is likely the most significant initiative that will happen in 2026. It's going to operate as an independent enterprise, but its success is going to basically cut across all the dimensions of resilience that are identified in our comp plan. And that includes strengthening the local economy, supporting community wellbeing, requiring robust infrastructure and governance and helping to shape our strategies for several years. I also put in here, I think one of the things that we really want to focus on is delivering high-quality services across all of our departments. And that includes parks, utilities, community engagement, administration as the foundation for our resilience and just be thinking about those as we kind of move forward. You guys also talked about in the last planning effort that we did on the second about a kind of going through our adopted plans that have recently happened. And that includes the sub-area plan, the multimodal transportation plan and the comprehensive plan are the, the main ones there. And kind of making sure that you looking at the goals that are, are outlaid there, especially in the short term. One of the things I wanted to include in this staff report is something that is kind of controlling in the comprehensive plan. And that is the resiliency framework it establishes is kind of the core community value. And what it says is resiliency serves as a high-level core value for this plan. It is the driver behind the more specific goals, policies and strategies and a guidepost to orient key community decisions about growth, development, investment and prioritization. The plan basically creates what it calls the city resilience index, which has four dimensions. I put them in this plan and kind of recommend that we use these as the buckets that we, we have as overarching goals for 2026. The first one of those buckets is helping wellbeing. And that is supporting people's ability to meet basic needs, including housing, social welfare, safe and affordable housing and healthcare. Economy and society, which is sustaining social and economic systems that enable residents to live peacefully, act collectively and maintain a local economy. Infrastructure and ecosystems, which is stewarding the natural and built environment, transportation, critical services and hazard mitigation and leadership and strategy, which is just ensuring effective governance, collaboration, adaptability and evidence-based decision-making. For the goal-setting process, what I have recommended is that we continue to use the SMART goals that we have used in the past. SMART goals are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. And they're a really good structure for this kind of strategic planning. I did include a couple of other lenses that might be useful as we kind of look at these goals and think about how they fit our overall plan. And those are alignment, does the goal advance the comprehensive plan and resiliency framework? Two, action, what specifically needs to happen and who is responsible? Three, capacity, do we have staff funding and partnerships to deliver on the goal? Measurement, how will we define success? Technology, how can we use digital tools to expand capacity, improve delivery and increase transparency? Consequences, what risks or unintended outcomes do we need to anticipate? And then pivot, like if conditions change. And then pivot, like if conditions change, what are we going to do? I think that using these lenses will help us really move forward ideas. I like to say that we start on ideas with visioning, like, wouldn't it be cool if, you know, XYZ happened through evaluation of options to the final commitments? Here's how we're going to do this thing. 2026 strategic buckets and priorities. I, I think really, all I really want to say about that is, I think that especially given the kind of the state the town is in and and the Eldora acquisition and the work that needs to happen in 2026, I think it's important to recognize that we can't do everything all at once. But we can use this resiliency framework that we're giving to ensure that all the daily work that happens in town in all the departments and all our long-term initiatives really reinforce each other and deliver benefit to the community. And that we can continually make progress across each one of the different ideas or other ones, if you present them. In my staff report, I kind of tried to organize these into these strategic buckets, thinking that that's a good framework for this. There may be goals, if there are, that we need to add to this, and that's one of the things that I am asking for direction tonight, if there are other goals that we should be thinking and tracking about. And then if these kind of make sense and how I've separated them. So I'll kind of let you read that. I won't go too deep into it, but I've got Eldora Mountain Resort Integration. I think this is a project that really cuts across each of the buckets and it's something that we're going to be focused on. But within that, we're also going to be doing several other things. For health and wellbeing, some of the big priorities for next year, no matter what, will be meeting our Proposition 123 requirements by permitting 13 homes. Britt and I need to work on updating the housing needs assessment just a little bit to make sure it aligns with new state policy. And we also would like to adopt a fast-track review process for affordable housing. In recreation and culture, I think kind of top of the list there is improvements to Gercio Field Trails, the hockey rink, and continuing to develop Barker Meadow Amphitheater and Waterfront Park as a goal. And then I guess also just to add it in here, I don't have Chapeau Park Playground, but we should have that and just continuing to work on that facility as well. Core services, focusing on our core services that are essential to community life and just thinking about performance indicators for accountability. And what I really mean by that is focusing on the work of each department and our work plans and what we're accomplishing in each of these places. For economy and society, the first one, and I think most important in this space is addressing the structural deficit we have in the general fund through disciplined budgeting and economic development strategies. It's important to remember from our budget conversation that we have cut expenses quite a bit. We probably can do a little bit more. But what we really need is to make sure that our revenue is sustainable and resilient so that it just supports our fund. You know, we're not trying to make money. We're just trying to cover, cover what we're doing. Downtown vitality, advancing the First Street Overlay District, which Planning Commission is working on right now. Possibly advancing the flexible street design that is one of the catalyst projects of the subarea plan. And then reviewing private parking policies, which is something that has come up in recent months as something that should be a priority for the town. Organizational culture, strength and alignment between the board, advisory boards and staff. Continuing the development of our executive leadership team and advancing Netherlands as an employee of choice. Community engagement, delivering projects and policies that build trust, equity and shared identity and creating ongoing opportunities for public participation. And then regional collaboration, just exploring the multi-jurisdictional housing authority with Gilpin, trying to bring that project to fruition. And then looking at other regional processes or partnerships where scale is necessary to accomplish our goals. Infrastructure and ecosystems, water and wastewater, execute the capital improvement plan, review fee structures for affordability and evaluate a transition to monthly billing, and then always protect and secure the town's water rights. Transportation and mobility, Lakeside or Lakeview Drive turn lane improvements. That's both on to Lakeview and then off of. Exploring pedestrian crossing near the visitor's center. That's going to be happening as part of the TIPS and SMS projects. So that's, that's already in progress. ADA sidewalk upgrades also in progress in places, but something we need to explore all over town. Second, and bridge, roundabout design. So basically looking at the roundabouts that we have and then looking at the bridge as well. And then parking management and signage. Parking management is listed as a catalyst project in the subarea plan as well. And as we know, the DDA has a signage project ongoing. Ongoing projects, I would really like us to be able to complete the Big Springs Egress Planning Project and SMS TIPS projects next year, and we'll be well on our way to that. I think that's achievable goal. Hazard mitigation, calling out specifically our need to advance fire mitigation projects and evaluate secondary bridge options for circulation and egress. That's something that we need to continue to advance. On the facility and street side, conducting a facilities property assessment and just looking at our buildings and kind of like starting to think about facility planning. Developing a street maintenance plan. We have a summer maintenance plan right now and it's actually working pretty well. We've put down a lot of aggregate. And as we talked about earlier, we're replacing culverts and fixing things and all of that. But over time, what I'd like is to have that kind of developed so that we have a a general maintenance plan for how we take care of streets, like what our standards are and all those kinds of things, which we do have. It's just more of a consolidation and continued improvement of our processes there that they're already engaged in. Under leadership and strategy here, I've got governance, which is exploring adoption of home rule, which is something that we've talked about as a big goal for 2026 and modernizing our municipal code. And what I mean by that is just continuing to audit it and make it, make sure it makes sense and does what we want it to do. Statutory obligations. We do have a municipal election coming up in 2026 that we'll want to execute to the best of our ability. Public safety. We have talked about the police or marshals department to strengthen our local law enforcement capacity. Another thing that I'm interested in having bigger conversations with the board about is our relationship with ODM specifically and how that could work in Netherlands in the future. Service excellence. And again, this is one of the more nebulous ones, but just making sure that we're really defining and measuring our core services and making sure that we're consistent and transparent in how service delivery happens in Netherlands. As far as planning approach, we've kind of already started on this path. You guys have identified several goals. And I think what I've got as a recommendation in my, my staff report is I think it would make most sense to develop a, a plan for 2026. Right now I'm calling it a mini-plan that would set goals for what we'll accomplish through that process and help us as we kind of move through the rest of the budget process. I also am thinking that it might make sense to have a bigger strategic planning retreat still and maybe following that spring election, just so that we've got new and returning trustees and really start thinking about our organizational, our organizational vision and values as part of that, and then really kind of thinking about our long-term strategic plan at that point. This is just a recommendation. We could still engage in a bigger process, but I think right now where we're at is in a good place to start thinking about the prioritization, other priorities you may have or how you might want to change this. And so essentially in my request for direction, that's what I'm asking is, do you agree with using this resiliency framework as kind of the organizational structure for the plan? With the Eldora integration kind of cross-cutting all of the strategies there? In terms of the priorities, are there, would you like to rank these or any that could be deferred or consolidated or thought about differently? And then in terms of the goal-setting process, is the, the kind of the planning approach that I outlined in my staff report appropriate? Is that something you'd like to do? Are you comfortable with the SMART goals and thinking about these different lenses for how we think about the goals? Is there anything you'd like to do differently there? I have technology here. I think you had a pretty big conversation about technology tonight already, but I think that that's something that we should always be thinking about how we leverage all different kinds of technologies to expand our capacity and improve service delivery and strengthen our transparency. And then vision and values. Do you want to have a bigger planning process in 26 to incorporate some of those other strategic elements? And then in terms of next steps, are you ready for us to start thinking about the drafting of this strategic plan that could guide our efforts moving forward? If you have any other questions or comments for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, John. All right. Any clarifying questions for Town Manager Kane?
On which part of the fire hose?
Pick one. Pick one.
John, of these, I, I know that these all, all these priorities and goals kind of came from us and from discussions and, and from staff as well. For like a mini-plan, were you envisioning all of these goals for a mini-plan?
I'm going to be honest with you. We're going to be working on these things at the staff level in some degree. I'm going to step back in our conversation a little bit when we're talking about Chapeau Park. And I think that that's something that I really want to highlight in this process. When we look at our last strategic goals, we made huge progress on a lot of them, but some didn't. And if you look at the last strategic plan, I think you see some of the constraints on why. And I think ultimately for me, part of this is building this executive leadership team, and that's what we've really been focusing on with the department heads is like building the structure so that we aren't just frontline work all the time, that we do have this planning capacity and capacity to build these other projects. And that's one of the reasons why I have been advocating for really strengthening the alignment between the board and the commissions and the advisory boards to make sure that all that work is aligned and with staff and to really be focused on, on the core service delivery that we, that matters here. So I think what I'd tell you is these are all things that I think we can be progressing and some of these are not really structured to be a SMART goal, like saying great service delivery is not, that's not a SMART goal. But I think that there, there are things that we can focus on, and I think as we kind of start having more capacity within departments to focus on some of these things, it will, will be more accountable altogether for how that happens. So I'd say like, some of these things, I think, and I think Tanya made a good point at our last meeting too about home rule, like we've had conversations about that and that's something that, you know, there's, there's process that needs to happen. We just kind of need to identify that and then move it forward. And there are some policy questions here. I think like how we do fire mitigation is a huge one, and I think that's something we need to start talking about as a community and our team, our parks team, they do it now. They do that work. But we have four people doing it and it's, it's, it's more than four people's work essentially. So I guess for me, recognizing, like you said, we have a fire hose here and we're going to continue to drink from it. But when we think about the big projects, I think that's really what I have been thinking is when we think about the big projects for 2026, that's why I like lay out the Eldora project, but things like the bridge, like how do we move that forward? And we may have opportunities, like maybe something comes up where like, you know, the, maybe the DDA finds a way for the amphitheater project to happen and we want to work together on that or, you know, things like that or where we can do that are important. This Lakeview Drive project involves CDOT, and so I don't know how, you know, that could be an involved process. So I'll stop talking, but I think ultimately what we want to do is build a structure where the work of the departments can happen, but we still are identifying these big buckets that we can, you know, the dream things that we can do or maybe not dreams, but the, you know, the overarching things.
So Lakeview Drive and the Eldora Roundabout were identified in the multimodal plan. Are those shovel-ready or do they require additional planning and design?
Additional planning. I've also, one thing that came up also is there's potential and it's outlined in the subarea plan where we could add parking to Lakeview Drive, and there's been some very high-level measuring.
Conceptual, right.
And I think one of the things that, like Lakeview Drive is 19 feet and it's hard to see what the actual right-of-way is. And we would need to identify like the room, like making sure there would be room for parking there. But one of the projects we could do is like a survey, this is what I'm getting at, is a survey of Lakeview Drive right-of-way. And whether or not, like what all that would be, that would be kind of the first step of like looking at that right-of-way. Understanding, can you put parking, how the turn lane would work? And then maybe starting some of the initial processes with CDOT for what would be required to do that, because there's going to be, it's going to be a little bit involved, but like finding, that, that's probably what the first step would be.
Okay. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to combine those, that planning into one for both the Eldora Roundabout and Lakeview Turnoff?
Yeah, I think the only thing would be the roundabout is going to be more complex, and so it could take longer and be more expensive, but I think we could identify those as one goal.
Right.
The other thing is the roundabout, the current roundabout that we have does have improvements there too. So you could do
You could do it all together.
Both roundabouts and then the Lakeview project.
Right. Yeah, because those were the, the three main points that are existing roundabout, Lakeview, and then the turnoff and Eldora. There was a phase one and a phase two for Eldora Roundabout, but I'm almost thinking like if we plan and identify even what the end gate, end goal is, which is the roundabout, then, you know, what does that look like from a surveying standpoint? Okay. My other clarifying question was what around fire mitigation? And at one point you had also mentioned like an emergency siren. I just didn't know if that was part of this.
We already applied for that grant. You guys approved the application. I want to say that was in August.
Yeah, a couple of months.
I am really hopeful we'll get that, that we have get two sirens if we do that. And so that would be all the money we need to install them. So if we are successful in that, that would be one of the projects we'd accomplish next year.
Okay. Regarding fire mitigation, what other ideas are sort of floating around?
Well, Mayor Billy has talked to a couple of people about potential grants we could have, and we have to understand more about. I think one of the things we need to under, one of the challenges we have is the size of the parks team and the streets team. And right now what's happening is, is in streets in the summertime, it's like a mad dash to get aggregate down, clean out culverts, do everything we need to do on the, the summer maintenance plan. And so it is a little bit limiting just in terms of capacity, because that's, that's really been the primary goal, and they've been doing a great job of that, but it, you know, we have such a short working season that that's been challenging. So our parks team also, their work plan right now, there's been, you know, they, they've been working on the Wrinkling Trail recently. They just worked on the rink. They do all the maintenance in Chapeau, grass planting, all the kinds of things that they're doing. And so adding fire mitigation to that list, there's tools we can do, and then there's also like potentially we might need staff. That could be the other thing. But there's some things that we've talked about, like in terms of like mowing our right-of-way a little bit more and things like that, and getting rid of low branches and working with that fire to do some of that work. There's also one of the big challenges we have in fire mitigation. We used to be able to have volunteers helping us cut wood. And that's been a challenge with our insurance provider. So finding a way to like have a larger body of people help with the tree cutting would be great, but I just don't know what the answer to that is.
Okay.
And it could be, we had met with wildfire partners and it was Andrew Jocelyn, me and Ty, actually, we did the walkthrough of, I kind of signed Old Town up for a community mitigation plan. So they're working through that, but there was, there was, they talked a lot about the potential. I think for us, like, we'll get that plan and depending, you know, as our first step, and then the next step would be for the, the Old Town, because you have to go kind of by neighborhood to go for fire-wise. And that, that would open up for like people in small lots like mine to be able to do an actual, you know, wildfire assessment. But they, the folks from wildfire partners did say that there would be money available potentially to put into like one or two or three cuttings. I mean, a lot of what Andrew says is really what needs to happen. It's just like weed whacking. You know, a right-of-way six feet even, you know, and, and really maybe all, like everywhere in town. Nothing else. It knocks down those quick combustibles. He has a better name for it. And also it kind of just starts setting an example, if you will. And that that could be paid for through one of these grants, maybe for three cuttings by, just by like a contractor, by a good people, you know, one of those, one of those forestry companies, or even potentially just weed-whacked by, you know, a contractor, let's put it that way. So this would potentially be a grant that would even, yeah, not even take, you know, the, the only challenge with the parks crew is that they're just limited in numbers and hours in the day. So it would, it would be someone else doing the work.
Oh, John. Well, how is it that we have a $40,000 contract with Good People Tree? And we've used about 18,000 of it to date.
I have not, I am sorry, Tanya. I've been trying to get the answer on that contract. We have a $2,400 contract that we had with them earlier, but I'm not sure.
Well, it's in the warrants is all from last week, last meeting where there was, so I'm just like, you're, you're saying how there's only four people on park staff, yet we've spent $17,000 year-to-date with Good People Tree Service. And according to the warrants, right? And last month, there was a $2,400 check. And, you know, maybe budgeted was 40,000. So I'm not sure where is all this information coming from. I'm not saying it's a bad thing that this is being done. I'm just questioning. Well, it's another, it's another question for you for later, but I'm just saying, it sounds like we do have staff. We have a $40,000 staff or contract with Good People to do stuff in town.
Okay. Can that be something that we follow up on, just so we can keep going?
I like, where are they working, what they've been doing and why we're not, why we're at, why we're being told this? I, I mean, I'm just, I'm really confused now. I, I was not confused until this particular meeting when you're like, it's basically Nikki and three other people chopping all these trees down.
They did, the $2,400 project was related to the cemetery. So we did use them, there was a $2,400 project on the cemetery. So we did use them, there was a $2,400 project on the cemetery, but I will, uh, maybe we could, I can provide an update at our next meeting.
Thank you.
And I, and I'd like an update on just our RFP process later too, for things like this. Seems to me there's a lot of tree people out there, so not a bad idea to get bids for contracts, you know? I wouldn't, I just go, why, shouldn't, this is a question I asked you, um, I'm curious, is there a number of, a financial number that requires RFPs for things like this?
Yeah, just change, so.
Yeah, just change to 50,000.
Right, my, in, under my previous approval authority, what we would do is there's PO process that was used. And that was one of the things that we were working on that to make, you know, that's basically what happens in the PO process. We make the effort to get the three bids of past policy, but I can share that.
Now we're not going to do that unless it's, um.
There's multiple procurement policies in the new.
Object here, just to make sure that we stay on task, if we could, if we could push this to.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if there is a follow-up thing here, um, yes. If there could be a follow-up on just that number as we go into strategic planning for wildfire, that would be perfect. Any other clarifying questions on this right now for the strategic plan? Trustee Miller?
Yes, so I just wanted to maybe back up a layer and talk about strategy for strategic planning. Because on one hand, we're getting kind of nitty gritty about this particular item under this particular bucket, you know? And it seems to me, based on kind of where we're at in the process and what we maybe hope to accomplish versus what we might realistically be able to accomplish, is that we spend our time coming up with what, you know, agreeing on what are the buckets? You know, what are all the, the, which I think John has done a good job of, of like setting up. Okay, these are all the categories of things where we have stuff to do that we want to prioritize. And then making a short five to 10 item, maybe 10 is too many, but something, five, give or take a few tasks, goals within those buckets that we could prioritize and say, okay, within transportation, um, my computer died, so I have to, um, fall back to tiny phone screens, but, um.
I believe that is the objective, correct, Town Manager Kane?
Yeah, and just really briefly, um, not to belabor the point, I, Tanya, I understand what you're seeing now. The budgeted amount is not for Good People Tree Service. It's the budgeted amount in 65, 21, 52, 10, which is the park maintenance fund. There's $40,000 in that fund and to date the balance remaining is 17,384. We did spend the $2,400 with, um, Good People Tree Service, which came out of that park maintenance fund. That's how you're seeing the 40,000 in the warrant.
Gotcha. All right, that, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand it before, but thank you for, um, bearing with me on that.
Thanks for that, John, yeah, thanks for that. Right, so I guess, I mean, maybe we're saying the same thing. So transportation and mobility, we've got Lake Shore Drive, uh, pedestrian crossings, visitor center, ADA sidewalk, blah, blah, blah. It seems like we should be kind of collectively putting together that list of what are these things? And then in conjunction with the advisory boards and departments prioritizing those things based on some combination of viability and impact where we can, and, cause like, you know, we're not going to get all this stuff done. So we can prioritize and say, look, within these buckets, this is our most achievable, highest impacting we can do. And, and then also because if we can involve the, the advisory boards better, they can help with the execution, because I think the higher level stuff, you know, Eldora and the, you know, John's, uh, base level service kind of stuff, like keeping the town functioning through all of this is going to take a lot of the board and staff time. And so if the advisory boards can be more involved in pushing the, the targeted things forward, we'll just have a better chance of things actually getting done if they, we can delegate. So that's kind of how I'd like to see us approach these things.
Any other clarifying questions at this stage before we get more into discussion?
Is that, I guess my clarifying question is, is that our plan?
What do we need tonight?
Right, what do we, what do we need to, so that we can effectively make that list, which would end up, and we kind of did this for post, like you end up with like a grid of these are our things, these are their impact, how do we prioritize them?
I think that's one of the questions, isn't it, John?
Yeah, and I think the other, the thing is, I think what it really boils down to is if you look under the goal setting process, looking at it and like how, what is a lens you're using to look at these things? You know, we're, we can, we can prioritize projects that have big budgetary numbers attached to them right now. And we may be able to accomplish that. I think what we need to say is like, we need to be open, like there's a grant opportunity to do something, we need to jump. And we need to jump if something happens. But also we have an opportunity in this next year, especially with the Eldora project. And so I'm seeing it's a cross cutting initiative to really think about who we are and where we are and how we work together. And I think some of the goal setting around that would be a really useful tool. And so I like kind of, and I think what Luke is saying is picking out how the advisory boards work with the board. And then what the departments are doing, some of this work is like, that's what I'm saying is the department work. What I would like to do with this also is build work plans for next year for the department. So we start really tying that all together. And I think that we can do that in large part for the day-to-day stuff. But like in terms of the big priorities, like if Lakeview Drive is like that, is like a, if that's one of the priorities, then we need to be looking specifically at grant funding, how are we going to do that? Starting these conversations to see that, that kind of thing. And so it, it might be just about like, what do you think about the departments? And then what do you think the big projects need to be focused on in 2026? And knowing that in, in May or June or whatever, we'd go through a bigger process and like really start roadmapping out the future.
Okay, just to clarify, like you, you and staff and with the input of the board have already kind of categorized these, these goals, identified the goals. And really what you're asking us for is, are we okay with a short-term, one-year project or one-year strategic plan? And if so, are there certain goals that we would prioritize in a different way? And then you would draft that strategic plan and come, many strategic plan and come back to us.
Essentially, and I think also the other thing I've been thinking is it, it might be useful, and I'll give you Eldora as an example. I don't think that anybody knew, you know, when something like that happens, it could be transformative. It would be useful to have a structure for the board to consider that if it's different from what their strategic plan is. So having that process built in there is also something I think could be useful. But yes, I think you're right, and I think it really is. How, I guess measuring these goals too, that's the other important question. Cause we can probably advance all these things, but what the actual, what's the measurement of success for them? You know, if we run into a challenge, I guess is the other question, but.
I want to stop the conversation right now, so make a motion to extend the meeting. It's currently 9:53 and I feel like this conversation is going to go on just a little bit longer. And we also have a, um, public comment and non-agenda items, so, um, what are we thinking? We can get this done in 10:15, 10:20, let's set a goal and hit it.
I love 10:15, we've got the goals, we're just trying to prioritize them.
All right, you think we can do it? Don't, don't, don't make me motion to extend the second time, all right? So we're going to do it. All right, I want to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:15 PM.
Again?
Ready, and then I'd also just like to make a note for the record that trustee Ty left the meeting at 9:25 PM due to connectivity issues.
Okay.
So voting on the extension to 10:15, trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yep.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yep.
And trustee Larson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, fabulous. Any other clarifying questions for this item?
Yeah, so the, the, the things you have listed here underneath each of these buckets, like those are the, the, the things that you have identified as the most priority items, or are we still like?
I, you have some flexibility there, you guys were also going to look at the plans, if there's anything that jumped out at you, or if there's anything else you think needs to be a priority right now, we should put it in. Cause it, this is where like the conversation in the future, when new things come up, like you're going to want to measure them against these goals. So this is, I think this is the time for the ideas to come. These are things that people have told me or have come up in board meetings and we said, this is, it can't be a priority right now. Or that folks emailed me like since our last meeting essentially. So that's really what we're at, but it, I do not know that it's a comprehensive list of every possible thing, so.
Okay, so in discussion, we can make our suggestions about items.
Yep, I'm gonna take us right through each one of these questions. All right, any other clarifying questions? All right, let's go to public comment first in the room. Is there anybody in the room who'd like to make a public comment on our strategic plan? Okay. You have to come to the microphone, state your name and your relationship to town. Can you make sure it's on?
Hi, Elizabeth Penziner, town resident from 8 West 4th Street. Just hoping to, to make a pitch that before you plan on spending money on new projects, that you make sure that you've designated funds to take care of maintaining the projects that are already the town's responsibility, like the Gillespie House. And I'm going to take my three minutes of public comment about that later, but it fits in really well here. That under culture, I think that we should be looking at town museums and the ownership of town properties such as Gillespie House that are in need of desperate maintenance and repair. So I'll, I'll speak to that again in just a minute with more detail, but, but putting my pitch for that, thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right. Now we'll go online to public comment on our strategic plan. Anybody would like to make a public comment, please come off mute. All right, seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for discussion. All right, so what I want to do is actually guide us, use this discussion and use the questions that Town Manager Kane has support, has supplied so that we can stay on task and get him the information he needs. So the framework, first of all, do we support using the comprehensive plans resilience framework as an organizing structure for the 2026 strategic plan, um, with Eldora integration elevated as a cross-cutting initiative?
Sounds great to me.
Okay, we got one non, okay, we got two. Do I have a three, do I have a three? We have a nod, we have a nod, we have a, okay, we have a four. All right, so we've got, yes, um, that sounds like it's a thing. Priorities of the goals identified by trustees, staff and adopted plans, which should be the highest priorities for 2026? Are there goals?